They expect to be done about 10:30 and we will open up about 12. We did request an encroachment permit from the state so that if the crowd exceeded what the square could handle, we would close down a portion of Main Street, but no earlier than 7:00. You know, after last year's little faux pas, we wanted to make sure that we got that correct and listened to the merchants, which we did. They are open till about 7:00 PM, so if it was deemed necessary to close Main Street, it would be the police making the decision and with their assistance, closing it. So that is the first one, which is May 24th. Do you all want me to do them, do you want to do them separate or you want me to put them all together?
Put them all together.
Together.
Okay. The next one, you will see is for the entire series, which would be Saturday, June the 28th, Saturday, July the 26th, and August 30th. And of course, we will do the Fireman Chili Cook-Off for Toys for Tots, but that will be enclosed, that is enclosed with the Festival of the Horse Street Closure Application. Everything will stay the same, exactly as I said, except for at 8:00 PM, the bands will start playing and the performance will end at 11:00. And we've done the same thing with the District 7 Permit requesting that.
Laurie, can you say those dates again, please? 8.
You've got the May 24th, Saturday, June 28th, Saturday, July 26th, and August 30th.
Thank you.
The final party on the square is actually a little bit different. We were fortunate that the Army National Guard is coming through the state of Kentucky and going to be performing, much like the National Navy Band that came through a few years ago. So we were tickled when they asked Georgetown Scott County Tourism to be the host of that. It is on a Thursday night, which is July the 10th. So we would ask for street closure for that with the barricades beginning at 3:00 at the front and a barricade on the side of the alley here. The only difference will be, we will move the stage so that traffic can get to the shops down along Court Street. And I have spoke to, there's only one that's open until 7:00, and she has said that she would contact me and let me know if she has any clients coming through so that we can make sure that her clients get to her shop on the Thursday evening. That band will be playing at 7:00 PM and they will be done by 10:00. And we did not ask for permission to shut down any part of Main Street for that event because we really feel like that it'll be smaller since it's on a Thursday evening. So there would be no street closure on the July 10th date for Fall Out Band. The next one is the Festival of the Horse. And it is our 34th annual. It's hard to believe, isn't it, that there's been 34 years of them? I remember coming as a small child and remember how much fun they were and happy to be part of that. One of the things this year sort of new is that Georgetown Scott County Tourism has adopted that as an official event. So it will be hosted by the Tourism Commission. You will note that the dates are for October the 2nd through the 5th, with the 2nd being the Chili Cook-Off. We have submitted an encroachment permit to the state because we would like to close the street at 2:00 PM on the Thursday. And then, of course, they would open back up at approximately 7:00 on Sunday. One other thing to note, just to mention is Royal Spring Park, we've always used that in the past. I have requested permission from Parks and Recreation to use that for the festival, but I would just like to reiterate it to you all that we will need Royal Spring Park again this year.
Motion for approval for every one of them, Mayor?
Second one, Mark. Discussion? I certainly look forward to the events and they draw a big crowd downtown.
Yep.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Good job.
Thank you very much. I look forward to seeing you all down there.
David Rice, Museum Director. No, no, I'm sorry, Steve. Mr. Rice.
You thought you were getting him, you got me, didn't you? I'm Larry Catt, Georgetown Scott County Museum. I'm here for just a minute. Wanted to bring down our new director, David Rice, introduce him to you. David's retired schoolteacher from Paintsville. He's John Pelfrey. He knows John Pelfrey, so if you, you know, but I just brought him down.
I thought you said a new Belfry.
He may know them too, I don't know. That's your part of the country, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
But anyway, I just wanted to introduce David to you. We're thankful to have him. He came on mid-September, mid-September, and he's on board and ready to go, so I'll let him say a few words and we'll be through.
Welcome, David.
Thank you. Yeah, John Pelfrey was a student of mine and he's a good A-minus student, but he'd get an A sometimes because he has this long neck that could sort of stretch over.
Strike that last I.
Yeah. Now, I'm thrilled to be here. I taught US History for 30 years there at Paintsville Independent High School, so hopefully I know a little bit about history. And I love this, being at the museum. It's like, you know, the perfect dream job for me being retired. And I've just got lots of energy and lots of enthusiasm about it, got a lot of great ideas. I'd love to, you know, really fix that museum up and just have it as a premier sort of tourist place. One of the, I guess, little areas of expertise I've got is on the history of cities. I've always enjoyed that, sort of why cities got started and why they grew and regretfully sometimes why they failed and declined sometimes. You've got such a wonderful little downtown section with all the interesting little shops. That's important to bring in your foot traffic. I also think it's wonderful that you've got the museum at one end and the Arts and Cultural Center at the other. It's almost like a shopping mall and you've got, you know, your two big stores possibly, like bookends at the end of each mall. And that's why really, I want to really build that museum up and have it as a great tourist center to help to get people downtown. That helps your local restaurants and your local shops and just keeps your town, you know, vibrant and growing. And of course, I'm sure we all want that. So I just hope to do my best to try to make that museum the best museum that it can be. I hope to try to attend meetings here in the future and hopefully you'll see a lot of them. And just to make myself available if you ever have any questions, what's going on at the museum, you know, and if there's some special events that maybe I can invite you to when we have some new exhibits. And again, just, you know, answer any questions that you ever might have about what's going on at the museum. You know, it is the Georgetown and Scott County Museum, and so we all should be in together on this and for the great betterment of downtown. So, that's it.
Thanks.
All right.
Well, welcome to Georgetown.
Thank you. I've been here close to two years.
Okay.
So I just, I've had family around here. I just, I love the town. It's just great.
Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
You next, Steve.
I'm Steven Price. I live at 167 Rucker Avenue in Georgetown. I asked David Sloan, who runs the EMS service, if it was my imagination or if in fact the sirens and warning devices I use on their vehicles, on their ambulances and on the fire trucks and on the police vehicles are getting louder. Is that my imagination or is that a fact? He said that's a fact because people ride now in cars which are largely soundproof. So the automotive industry is causing Georgetown to become a sonic hazard for pedestrians. Another hazard we have is salt on the roads, again largely to accommodate motor traffic. KRS Chapter 150 on Wildlife Conservation and Preservation prohibits all parties in the state of Kentucky to cause to enter public waters any substance which would interfere with wildlife, including plants and wildlife habitat. I talked with Howard Grujov and Jenny Grujov this morning about salt in front of followers. They said, well, you can't stop us, look at the city. I talked with Judge Lusby last week. He said, you can't stop me, look at the state. That's why I'm running for City Council, to secede from that kind of complicity with irresponsibility and illegality. In other words, people willing to break the law to accommodate the motor car. I shovel snow. I've got customers that formerly were using salt. I say, I'll do this for half what you've been paying someone else to do it and I won't use any salt. I've got a lot of customers now. I'm out there on the streets doing it the right way with hand tools, no salt, and the cars that come by, everything's like every third automobile or truck has no knuckler, no, what do you call it? Sound emissions reduction, which is against the law. It's a violation of KRS 22430166, I believe it is. It's also a violation of the Vehicle Chapter 189.140. Are these laws being enforced? Are they being followed? No, they're not even being followed by the town government, who's supposed to be exemplary to the citizens. And the citizens are just following right along, breaking the law.
Okay, sir. Thank you, Steve. Next to my comments, I have two or three things I want to mention to you. I would like to thank Public Works for the great job they've done through all this bad weather we've been having, and certainly we're not out of it yet. We were concerned about our salt supply. We did get a load in supply today. Terry, you said we have more on the way?
Yes, sir.
So we got to a situation where all the surrounding areas and us are basically the same thing, running very, very short. In fact, the state itself, I saw the report on the news the other night, is running very, very short. So they've been working around the clock, doing a very, very good job, and certainly appreciate you and the guys, Terry. Thank you so much. I want to form an IT Committee, Technology Committee, and I'll be issuing an executive order to that effect. Going to have nine committee members made up of council members and those people that have an IT background or who are very interested in IT. Three council members, the Ms. Tackett, Mr. McEwen, Mr. Singer. Have a police officer, that will be Captain Swanigan. Dispatch be represented by Jeb Warner. Parks and Rec, Ms. Robin Allen. Fire, John Ward. And City Hall will have, of course, our IT Director Jennifer and Andrew will be on that committee also. We'll have a standing meeting at 5:00 the 3rd Wednesday of every month. Now, the, what we are looking for this committee to do is to review the city's ongoing IT needs and provide oversight of the technology budget, contracts, and progress being made in IT. So I think the council aware of that. Also, at the request of Mr. Penn, going to appoint Mr. Showalter to the Interlocal Committee. Brad's job takes him on the road and he doesn't know when he's going to be in town, so he's requested to be replaced. Thank you for serving on the committee, Brad. Appreciate it. Any questions on any? Okay. Jack? Jack bring us some good news tonight. Municipal order approving incentive for ICI.
Well, let's can reverse those.
Reverse those, okay. Municipal order approving sale of lots at Lanes Run Business Park. All that Jack has tonight is positives.
Yes, sir, nothing but positives. Do we, I don't know, do you read the municipal order in relationship to the, okay. Two things that we have for you. The first thing is a municipal order that deals with the contract for sale of land at Lanes Run Business Park. Each of you have a copy of this handout. Call your attention to the one that's pending at the bottom, Industrial Concepts. We have an existing contract for sale of that property. And now, since Industrial Concepts has been purchased by another group, it was formerly a part of Hartland Steel, it's Hartland Automation Solutions. This will be property owned by ICI LLC Real Estate. So what we're asking to do is amend that contract, create a municipal order allowing the mayor to sign this new contract for the sale of the property. And that property will in fact be able to be closed this week. The mayor is going to hopefully sign that tomorrow if you can approve tonight. And then I think we're going to be able to close it like on Wednesday or on Thursday. So that's what the municipal order is for, 3.874 acres at $25,000 an acre for a total of $96,850.
So moved?
So moved, Kelly. Second. Second by David. Any further discussion, any questions, Jack, at this time? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Good. Okay, now we can move back up to the other item.
Now we go to the resolution relating to the KBI Kentucky Business Investment Incentive for ICI LLC. And before I talk about it in a little bit more detail in terms of the process of what we're actually doing, Mr. Ed Welch is here. Ed is an employee of ICI LLC. I've asked him just to give you a brief overview of the project. This is an existing manufacturer on Supply Court, so this is an expansion. So, Mr. Welch.
Most of you know me as a member of Toyota. I retired about a year ago and I've been working with ICI since that time amongst other things. You have all these retired guys talking about what they're working on, so I'm one of them now. But ICI is a process equipment manufacturer with particular skill in controls integration, automatic guided vehicles, and welding equipment. They do conveyors and lift equipment and other equipment, but particularly those three areas. They have a complete project staffing capability, currently 54 members, mechanical, electrical engineers, machinists with the machine shop, fabrication shop, an electrical shop, and then a complete assembly shop. The members then typically follow their job into the field to do the installation. Installations are generally done at our customer base, which includes agricultural vehicles, automotive vehicles, tier-one suppliers to major manufacturers. We're proposing, one of the roles I have is as a strategic business analysis for future business and business expansion. This expansion, 15,000 square feet, along with a small expansion for employee amenities on the east side of the current ICI building, will facilitate the growth of ICI, which is necessary to meet some of their projected goals of nearly doubling in size from an employee standpoint over the next five or six years. Also, discussions about it becoming the global headquarters for Hartman Automated Solutions. So that's generally the background of ICI. Started, it was founded in 2000, actually by a couple of members who were skilled trade members at Toyota who worked for me at the time, and they chose to go it alone and they were very successful, but the company grew beyond two members. And now Hartman Automated Solutions is ready to take it to the next step and I'm supporting that activity.
Thank you, Mr. Welch.
Some details, let me, since this is a part of an application for incentives that was preliminarily approved by Kitfa, I thought it's important to, for the first time, I think I've verbalized this, but I want to make everybody clearly understand the process. As I said, we look at this particular sheet. Well, before we do that, let me say this. This project initially, when it was preliminarily approved, it was presented as 10 new jobs and $600,000 of capital investment. What we are presenting today in terms of a KBI incentive resolution is now the 29 jobs and $1.3 million of investment. So it's changed significantly. As Ed just said, there are currently 54 employees at the plant, so there's 20 new jobs that are going to be created. It's all that we're dealing with as it relates to the KBI incentive. Has nothing to do with the 54, but I hope you also heard what he said about doubling, thank you, doubling that in the next four or five years, certainly. What you have before you here is the process which changed significantly in the last legislature, but let me just call your attention to a couple of things. Obviously, the first thing, I meet with clients, so I met with the folks at the time, was Industrial Concepts. Second thing is important, local support letters. On a preliminary application, nothing comes before the City Council and/or the Fiscal Court. What happens is that letters of support or recommendation are submitted by the mayor and/or the judge, or both, in this case, both, for the incentive program. That's the second thing. Then there is what's called four or five down, a Kitfa Board Meeting. It's Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority. They meet and give preliminary approval to the incentive. And you'll notice over the right, Kitfa approves it. What's made public is that's approved, who the company is, and the job creation and the incentive. What we are doing here now is going to what's called final approval, and that's further down. It says local support resolution ordinances, public hearing. Prior to final approval by Kitfa, the client, Ed, myself, present to you the project for your approval. This is when the actual resolution for the incentive is brought before the public body. So that's what we're talking about here today. If you approve this, the resolution, then it goes back to Kitfa. This really gets kind of interesting just in terms of the process, and I apologize. But if you approve it, Kitfa approves it, then the company is final, but they still have to activate the actual incentives. So give me, I'll give you a prime example right now. YS Precision Stamping, which is one of our joint, Japanese joint venture companies located in the Business Park, they have also a KBI. They have never gone to final. They went from zero to 17 jobs, which is where they are right now. There's no incentive, they've not activated. So that's occupational tax that's coming to the city and to the county without an incentive. At some point in time, they will finalize, and I will come to you to do that. So once that happens, they activate and then they say to the cabinet, we want to activate. We want for the incentives to start taking off from there. So that's what this thing that I tried to put together to simplify the process for the Economic Development Cabinet and for you all. So here we're discussing the resolution, as I said, the final. It only impacts, as I said, the 29 jobs that will be created, and this only goes for the amortization period, it's for 10 years, just on the new jobs itself. I don't know, do you, do I need to read the resolution or is it, I mean, it's all, do they have copies of the resolution?
It is. I want to clarify the municipal order, because that's what our.
Says it very clearly what it is. I think it's important to note again, from my perspective, as the employee of the chamber and Scott County United, that it is not 10 jobs we initially asked for, it's not $600,000, it's $1.325 million, and it's 29 new jobs, whose average base is $25 per hour. That includes benefit. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So we're not losing a half percent, we're gaining a half percent.
Yes, sir. You gain, you actually gain not only the half.
29 workers.
That's exactly right. You also get occupational tax on the construction, you also get abhorrent tax. Yeah, it's a, it's a absolute win-win-win. But let me tell you what it really boils down to, from my perspective, as your industrial economic developer. This is again, an expansion of an existing business. This company has a location in Indiana. This company doesn't have to be in Georgetown, Kentucky. They could have done it very well in Princeton, Indiana for that matter. They do AVGs in the same systems. They chose to be here. I think Tim and Joy may have had a lot to do with it, the gentleman he's referring to. But no, it's spinoff, and that's what it's all about, in my opinion.
Motion for approval?
Second, let me ask, I want to ask a question, Jack. 1.325 is annually?
One, that is the investment they're making, I'm sorry.
Yes.
That's the investment they're making, the capital investment, let me, that, the.
It's about the same figure as 29 jobs at 25 an hour.
29 jobs actually breaks out to about $1.5 million of payroll a year.
Right.
That's great. But the 1325 is the capital investment, and by the way, that does not include the land. The land is not a part of this because the land contract is beforehand, there's a but for clause.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Thanks, Jack.
Again, thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Welch.
All right, we have Sufisity with us tonight. We bring an update, been doing work in our IT department. We also like to welcome Kirby back tonight. He is here with Mr. Clinton Nils. Mr. Ramsey, you always welcome.
I think Andrew wanted to make a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
Kirby, I'm just going to turn it right over to you, just.
Oh, you are? Well, makes the trip worthwhile then, I guess.
Well, I will say that we contacted you all and asked you to come up here and speak about the work that you all have been doing with us, and, you know, there were several comments at the last meeting about third-party consultants, and we really wanted to give the council an accurate picture of exactly what it is you all are doing for us, so.
Okay. Well, let me thank you all again. This is my second visit since I retired from working for Georgetown, and maybe I just need to come back a couple of times a year just to say hello.
You can do that.
It's always my pleasure to drive the Parkway and come up here. Let me commend the mayor and the council for the creation of a technology committee. I had one in Bowling Green through my tenure there, and I can tell you firsthand that it will be a tremendous asset in helping you reach the right decisions. Because when you spend money on technology in this day and age, you want to spend it wisely. And you want to spend it with the confidence that you're hiring professional services that are reliable and that can give you the kind of results that you need and the kind of results that you deserve when it comes to dealing with your databases and your information systems. I went back to the fall notes that I had when I was here last time and refreshed my memory on what we talked about, when we talked about you all beginning a process of joining the IT in a Box program that is offered by the Kentucky cities. And I believe my notes indicated, I pointed out four specific areas that we would tackle immediately. First and foremost was getting you your data backed up, not just locally, secured, but also off-site. That was a shortcoming that your old system had. So your data is now protected both locally and it's stored in the cloud off-site. Second, we promised you an email system that would be reliable for those users on the system to help get you off a blacklist so that your email would not be rejected or that Tracy would not be able to get her documents sent off to the state in an orderly fashion. We promised you security on your servers and a 24/7 monitoring system that would look for problems, that would catch those issues that needed to be addressed in a proactive manner rather than just letting your servers. manner, rather than just letting your servers, uh, become dangerously dysfunctional. And fourth, we promised you a new website, and I understand that is going to be forthcoming somewhat soon. You receive many other benefits too. You've got vendor management and advice from Sophicity on pricing and procurement issues. You've got assistance from Michael Martin, Sophicity's technician, who works out of the Lexington KLC office. You've got office products, uh, through Microsoft for your users that were on the system, and you also received the availability of a document management system to document, get all those documents off paper and into the environment. What we're here tonight to do, and I want to introduce Clinton just a moment, is to update you, he will update you on the progress that's been made, and because we knew going into this that you had many other problems, but Jennifer keeps telling you exist, that he's actually going to show you a roadmap and a set of goals that can address some of those other issues if you'd like. And then after Clint does relay those on the table, let's have some questions and answers and see if we can, can address it so that what goes to the technology committee next week will have some input from the council this evening, okay? Clint Nelms is the chief operating officer for Sophicity, which is based out of Alpharetta, Georgia, right outside Atlanta, and they have a tremendous, um, uh, number of clients and experience in the municipal environment. They help Georgia cities, they have helped now a total of 10 communities, and the number will continue to increase as I travel the state of Kentucky cities, uh, through the Kentucky League of Cities program, and they just now are getting underway in the state of Arkansas to help those municipalities over there. So they bring a lot of experience, about 12 years in the business of helping communities, and Clint, uh, has 16 years himself, six with Sophicity. So with that, I'm gonna let Clint kind of lay things out for you, and then we'll answer or respond to any questions that you have.
Thank you, Kirby.
Thank you, Kirby. It's a pleasure to be here, I appreciate your time. I prepared two documents, and I'd like to walk them, do you all have those? Okay, the, um, the first one is titled Strategy to Meet the City's Goals. I envision us as a team. We're, we're already here, Sophicity has already begun to engage with cities, with the city, and we have, right now, about 20 supported users with, with about 70 additional users that are having, uh, have email coverage from our platform. And when, in, in talking with Andrew and looking at some of the ways that we could help the city meet these goals, the, there's a number of, of challenges that, uh, that the city wants to tackle in, in the next year. Um, I, I looked at some different ways we could do that. How could we speed this up, and how can we team up with, with Georgetown? So I put this document together to, to sort of visualize where we're at right now with your existing coverage. The, the program that you're on right now, about 20% of the city is covered fully, I mean, and when I say covered fully, I mean that they have all the benefits of the Microsoft Office licensing, they've got a help desk seven days a week, um, they've got access to onsite support if we have to send our engineer out from, from Lexington. Uh, and then there's about, the, the remaining 80% of the, of the city's employees, they really fall into Jen's responsibility, and she had asked me to look at different ways that we could increase the coverage for the city to free her time up so she can work on some of the higher-level goals for the city. So that's what I put together here. Um, on the, the second page, beyond the title page, it just shows where we're at right now by department versus where we would, we're proposing to take the city, which would be full 100% coverage. Um, and then I broke out this roadmap, which is the third page of this document. I want to talk about this so that you all can see where we're, where we've gotten the city in, in the short time that we've actually been engaged with you. Uh, some of the items that have been completed for the 20 users that are already on board include ticketing system, patching, maintenance, antivirus, and desktop support. These are some of the things that Kirby was mentioning. Um, we've gotten the, the active directory, and I'm gonna avoid a lot of those techno jargons, but we've gotten the active directory backed up, we've got onsite and offsite backups. Uh, we've been providing support, remote support, uh, monitoring and management of, of the equipment, and we've overhauled your email system. And I, I want to point those items out because we've been engaged since the end of December, and we've already gotten a lot of these. I consider these to be very big valuable goals. We've already gotten those done, and, um, we see, in, including updating and, and implementing new antivirus and patch management strategies. These are some of the security goals that we have already taken on, and we're proposing to take the net to the next level, which is to take on those responsibilities across the board for all of the users, to allow the city to have standard copies of Microsoft Office to be able to upgrade those things. The city will not be, um, incurring additional costs from that, but also, we want to put an engineer here. And the quote that I put together would provide us, we, we would put for three to six months, one of our engineers onsite here at the city. The goal being that that would free up your systems engineering to focus on larger items, things like your phone system. And, um, our engineers would take on a lot of the day-to-day support and responsibility that has been on Jen's shoulders. I see that as a way that we can partner with the city to succeed. We would move to a mode where our engineers, and, and it's not like you're just gonna get one engineer from us. We have a team that runs seven days a week. This is multiple skill levels, okay? And all of the people that are on our team have specific skillset in municipal support, okay? We're dealing with public safety, we're dealing with public works in cities all over the states of Georgia and Kentucky, and as Kirby mentioned now, and also Arkansas. Um, so we see this as a, uh, as a roadmap, if you, if the ci- if the city adopts basically 100% supported platform with us, if they move from having 20% of the city subscribe to our services up to 100%, then, uh, then in order to meet those goals in, in this year, we'll put our engineer out here onsite, day in and day out, to provide support. This means that the city will get the benefit of having additional on-the-ground engineering without having to add an employee, um, so it's an alternative to staffing. And in addition to all of that, the city employees across the board will get the, um, the benefits listed in the quote. Uh, that includes, like I said, the, um, the IT in a Box platform, software, the licensing, additional backups, additional coverage, the support, and all of that would be for all city employees instead of just the 20% that we're covering right now. And that's the quote that I prepared, that's the second document, okay? It, it, the page two of that quote lists all the things that would, that all the city employees would immediately be able to benefit from. We would be able to turn this up very quickly. We have an engineer out of Lexington that literally, if the city moves in this direction, we can have him out here. We've already had him out here, uh, Jen had a leave of absence, so we placed him here at the city for seven days, give or take one or two, whichever weekend. Um, but we, we're, we're gonna be able to succeed using this strategy because it's what we've been doing with other cities, but we've already seen some success by, um, with the goals that we've accomplished in this first quarter. I feel confident that if, um, the city moves in this direction with us, that a number of the larger goals that are laid out on that roadmap will be accomplished in the first two quarters, and we'll be able to free up Jen's time so that she can work on the high level goals. Um, but the, you'll see on the quote, the third page of the quote, it covers the fees. Um, this would be, this is not new cost, in other words, this is an increase in your subscription. The city is currently on a 20-user package. This would move the city from a 20-user package up to an 80-user package. And then if the city is willing to do that, then Sophicity is willing to eat the cost of placing an engineer here so that we can partner up and make this happen. Um, I covered a lot, so I think the best thing that I could do right now would be to stop and ask what questions you have for me.
Mark, go ahead. Who repeated that last thing that you was saying about? Did I hear you correctly saying that you went from Georgia to Indiana?
Oh, sure. This is, right. Right now, yes, yes, sir. The, um, the city's currently paying just under $4,000 a month for our platform, so this would be an increase of about $7,000 a month, okay? And if the city is willing to do that, then we will eat the cost of placing an engineer out here for three to six months.
So that figure that's right below that-
Yes, sir.
-figure basically, that voided out.
Yes, sir, absolutely. If, if you're looking at the third page of the quote, where it lists onsite engineer, there's quantity zero. We, we will have an engineer here, it's just zeroed out so that it doesn't show up as a cost to the city.
Did you say that the engineer had been here some?
Absolutely. We've had an engineer onsite, um, as recently as, uh, two weeks ago, and then as needed. So if Jen needs us outside, right now regardless, for the covered users, the 20 users that you already have subscribed, if you need us, we'll come out here. But the difference is that we want to move, we want to move in a direction that we've seen succeed with other cities, and that is to have an engineer here during, then, during, I, I think it's gonna take two quarters for us to get the city in the, in, in, in meet these goals, um, and I feel like six months would be enough time to make that happen. To do that, we would have to get somebody out here.
Back to Clint, I have one small issue. Jen has two primary possibilities. One is the platform, the infrastructure itself, the system. The second is your users' requests, problems, viruses, things that pop up every day. For one person to be able to deal with both, the size of operation that you're running, that's difficult. So I think the proposal that Sophicity is putting on the table, if you don't want to just run out and hire somebody, and one more person on staff isn't really gonna give you the support that you're gonna get from Sophicity, because they're gonna put a new person in here to work with Jen, and they're gonna give you the support from like, when I was in Atlanta, I counted 13 people in operations who will take care of your operational needs by the help desk system, so.
That's right.
When will it get to the point that you can do all this off-site with having the one person here, and then having the engineer won't be here, and then everything else can be managed off-site?
I think what, I think what, and I'll let Clint address the technical aspects, but from my perspective, if we can get your system up to the level that it should be for a city your size, then you can evaluate the need for staffing at that point.
That's, that's exactly right.
You know, you might be able to handle a lot of it remotely, and Jen might be free and on her way to take care of, of user needs, because the technical side, the system side will be so enhanced and improved that it's not gonna require the demands on her time that it is now, because one, the equipment's outdated, two, the infrastructure needs a lot of work done, you need a new phone system, you know, in place that can save you beaucoup of money, you know, if you can switch over from the old system to a newer one. So there's, there's ways you save money, and there's ways you can address those issues that are demanding all of her time. And when a user calls and says, "My computer's not working," they don't want to wait four, five, six, seven hours. If they have to wait, a lot of them don't know what to do with their time because they're so dependent on technology. So being able to address those calls and get Sophicity the information they need to get the system up to speed where it should be, that's, that's really what this proposal would address and allow you to do.
That's right.
But, if I may, but to be clear, this, there's no hardware, software, servers, or anything that would be included in that, so that, whatever you all would be, whatever you would find as you move forward, there would still be additional expenses.
You could, yeah, absolutely, the, it, it does include, and that's sort of a, it's, it's sort of a tricky point of conversation, but it does include the licensing associated with this. So in other words, um, let's just say that, uh, that day one, we realized that the 60 additional users that we're taking on for the city, uh, they're all running an old version of Microsoft Office, okay? That's included. That's part of this, okay? We just roll it out. We're just doing, we're in a deployment mode. Um, let's say that, uh, one of the ticketed items, uh, for this year, I, I believe Jen had, um, would be to replace your antivirus system, okay? That's included, the licensing is included here. Um, the servers that are associated with those systems are also included for all of those employees that are covered. Uh, but if, there are gonna be things like purchasing computer hardware, that, replacing a desktop, that sort of thing, that cost is not gonna be included.
Um, you mentioned earlier, I, I, I think Kirby mentioned it, that one of the things that we had talked about initially was providing flawless email. We had a discussion, I want to say two weeks ago in here, where we had fairly significant email issues. Is that, has that been resolved? Was that on your all's end, was it our end, what?
My understanding is that we are, we have just now finished our implementation and a complete overhaul of your emails.
Okay.
Okay, and that is, that's outside of this discussion, meaning that, um, that was accomplished regardless of this proposal. That's already done. My understanding, and, and Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that, uh, when we completed onboarding everyone to the new mail system, those issues have been addressed, they're done, it's closed out now.
100%.
100, 100%.
As far as, as far as the 20 users?
Right.
The 20 users that we had.
That, yeah, the, the, the covered users have got that, those advantages, and again, that's one of the reasons that we would like to see the city increase the head count, um, so that we can provide those types of benefits to everybody.
How much time is she spending right now outside of those 20 users? How much time is she spending with the other 60 users that, that would be part of that program?
That's a really good question. I, it would be very hard for me to, to ballpark. I know that it's so much time that one of the things that we need her to do right now is work with our provisioning team to get your website done, and, um, she's so, she's so covered up, so consumed by the day-to-day support of all the users, that she's not able to take those next steps with our people. That's one, we, we, we want to get that rolling for you guys immediately, and we're looking for her input, and that's one of the things that I, I immediately, when I was looking at the situation, I immediately recognized that as, um, she needs more bandwidth here. And when I mean, I, I shouldn't use the word bandwidth, she needs more resources here so that she can work with us to get some of those larger items done, uh, including phone systems auditing, all, there's a lot of those things that are on the goal list.
First 20 users, that encompasses what, city hall?
It's absolutely right, it's city, um, actually, I have the list right here. It's city hall, the cemetery, um, the, if you, if you refer to that, uh, second page, it's got the two coverage tables. Uh, it's a percentage of public works, it's a percentage of the fire department, a very small percentage.
Okay. So the building, building inspection is just what, one user over in building?
That's right.
No over electrical inspection?
Right now, none of that, exactly.
Planning, one of our issues is planning and, over in planning and zoning, the band, what they have is they have something, um, basically, uh, street-level maps that a lot of realtors, a lot of-
The GIS data.
Yeah, GIS data. A lot of realtors use it, well, anybody, you know, politicians, whatever. Um, and a lot of, they're using our server, and that's pretty, you know, um, rich data going through a very tight, tight window on that bandwidth. Is that something you guys are addressing?
We're gonna help with that, absolutely. Um, if you look at the roadmap, I cr- I put, uh, uh, goals related to infrastructure, including documentation and bandwidth. The audit and upgrade, that's one, that's one of the ways that we are addressing this for other cities. Uh, this is a common need, and actually, your contract with your current provider is about the need to be renewed. So what we're proposing, we have a third party out of Atlanta that we are leveraging, this will be at no additional cost to the city. Um, we're leveraging with cities in Kentucky right now. They will come in, they will do an audit, and they will shop for you, um, other providers. That's gonna help you right-size the bandwidth, you'll be able to see what the other, what, um, what competitive cost would look like for it, and that should also, uh, uh, address the speed issues that you guys have got right now because you have a small pipe. And I would encourage you to let us do that for you because we're not, we're not, we're gonna be bringing in a, an impartial third party to do that assessment and give you those options, and if we do, we, the time is right to do that before you go and renew with your existing provider. That way, you'll know that the money that you're spending's the right, it's the right spend. Um, and, and we've had a lot, we've saved a lot, I was, I was telling Andrew earlier, we've saved a lot of cities a lot of money, and I don't mean the fake IT money where people talk about savings and you can't actually spend, I'm talking about real dollars. Um, so this is a good time, this, this year is a good time for you all to be looking at those things, and, um, I, I, I want to get that underway for you. We can do that in the first two quarters of 2014.
What about itemization on the bills? I mean, are you gonna be able to break out the time that you spend on per agency? We have some shared agencies here.
Um, we can, we can make that work, uh, if you all just tell us what you need, okay? So traditionally, the way we itemize on an invoice is by head. So we have a subscriber list, this is literally a report that goes out to Jen every month, and it says, "These are all the people that we're supporting at the city," and she just looks at it and says, "Yes, well, so-and-so's still, still with us, so-and-so left, we've added three more in this department." Um, that's what shows up on the invoice, okay? And the service level for those people, either email only, which is what you have right now for a lot of them, or full, fully supported is gonna show up on the invoice. If you need us to further break that down by department, we'll just customize the invoice, you can see that on a monthly basis.
So my understanding is that this is like an ongoing service, rather than going in like a capital-style investment-
That's right.
-where you're going in, doing a fix, and then leaving. But this is more an ongoing, it isn't like-
Right.
Is it like getting your roof replaced, where a guy goes in, replaces your roof, and he doesn't come back for twenty years?
This is going to sound like a salesman, but that's part of my, my role here today. We want an ongoing relationship with the city. We want a partnership with the city. We've already started that. And we're, we're not trying to get you all to make a big capital investment here. That's not our, our purpose. We don't sell computers. That's one of the questions I get the most often. Well, you're going to come into our city, and you're going to sell us a bunch of servers. You're going to come into our city, and you're going to sell us a new phone system. We don't sell any of that. We literally, this is the relationship that we established already with the city. This is the, the vehicle that we use to work with other cities. And the, there's not an upfront capital investment that I'm asking you all to make here. We're just going to be upping the number of subscribers that you would have with us.
So you started off with twenty users primarily in City Hall, Fire Department, and then just one over in Building Inspection.
That's right.
Not over in Electrical Inspection, and you haven't touched a P N Z?
Right.
Two weeks ago, you were involved in doing what you're doing right now. Is that right?
Yes.
I guess I'm kind of curious why, why we didn't, I mean, last, two weeks ago, we had a meeting with a lot of detail about the IT department, but I don't, personally, I don't recall any of this conversation coming up. And it probably would have been helpful. And I guess I would probably ask that question.
Let me try to address that, if I can. You know, you, you look at, you look at the services that IT in a Box provides, I've got a list. And I mean, literally, they are, they are, we thought that's what they were doing. And it's, the, the four things that Kirby first mentioned, we really had no idea how much above and beyond what's on those bulleted points that they are really doing for the city. And, and we, we probably should have known that. I mean, it was a shock to me, but when I spoke to Dave and to Clint, I mean, I was just shocked at how much more they're digging into the city's IT needs, rather than just giving us that email support. They're working hand-in-hand with Jennifer to try to come up with plan and to try to, you know, to, they're bouncing ideas off of each other. So I don't really have a, a good excuse for why we didn't know that. I could just tell you, we didn't, and we do now.
But it sounds like the bottom line is, we're doing what we kind of asked and wanted to be done. I mean, it sounds like it was in the process, and it is in the process, and progress essentially is being made. So what, I guess, direction we're going to go now is, they've kind of made a proposal to us, right? We, we're, the mayor's formed an IT committee. We're going to take that proposal to the, to the committee, along with any other options that may be available to us. And that committee will come back to the council and make recommendations.
You've got it. You've got it.
Absolutely.
We'll also, you know, I want, I want to bring up, we had a, we had an interlocal committee meeting on Monday, and we, we brought up the idea of the shared departments and the shared costs. And that is going to be one of the first agenda items for the, the committee to consider is how you tackle that, that issue. And, and there, there's a variety of ways to tackle it. And in my personal opinion, there's a couple of really simple solutions that would fix the problem for everybody. But, you know, the committee's going to evaluate all of the potential ways of fixing it, want to bring those other parties to the table, planning and zoning, electrical inspection, building inspection. Talk to them about how, you know, they would, you know, what, what their preferences are, or what their input is. And then come back, like you said, with a recommendation on that, and hopefully a recommendation on this as well.
Did you say the interlocal committee? Is that what you said?
Interlocal is what met on Monday.
Right.
We met on that.
And they will be the ones to continue to meet, to, to work out any type of partnership.
It's separate from the IT. Yes, yes.
But what, what they indicated in the interlocal committee was, they wanted, before they were even willing to really have that conversation, and I totally understand that, what they wanted was a roadmap. And that's what we're trying to get, is do their roadmap, so we can go back to them, right? Go back to them and say, "Here are the options. Let's discuss it."
Committee was very, I sat in on the meeting, the committee was very amenable to having a consultant, a third-party consultant. And it sounds like we have a lot of that work already being done, done for us. So it was the case that we had a list, what we had contracted for back in the fall was a list of kind of like a menu of services that you guys are providing to cities throughout the South, Georgia, Arkansas, even Kentucky. And of course, KLC, that's the reason they're partnering, partnering.
Right.
And that, in doing that list, you are also doing stuff beyond that list in order to kind of get some of that stuff on that list fixed. Is that correct?
That's absolutely right.
And in the night, when you're talking about expanding it from twenty users to eighty users, that also means more capability as far as fixing the fundamental problems, so that we can have data security, data backup, website, security mail.
It's adoption of strategy. And, and it's, we know it's a winning strategy, because we're, we're winning, we're succeeding with other cities in the state, using these exact same methods.
Okay.
And let me point out, those eighty users of twenty now, the help desk services, Monday through Friday, are seventeen hours a day. And they run three shifts on their engineers. And on weekends, they run from nine to five. So you pretty much are going to have seven-day coverage, and any user assigned to the system has the right to pick up the call, call the help desk. And don't have to go through Jen. That's going to be a blessing. And with an engineer provided by Sufficiency on site to handle those calls that might need somebody to go to a building, go to an office, that will keep her focused on getting all the information to Sufficiency to get the whole system and networks upgraded. And if you, if we don't do that, it might take years to accomplish what we think you might be able to accomplish by the end of this calendar year.
Overnight, I went from having a twelve-year-old software for my email and calendar and word processing and, and, and spreadsheets and all that. I went from having a twelve-year-old program to having a one-year-old program. And I can now get my email on my phone, I can get it from home through the internet. I can share my calendar with my coworkers. I can see my actual calendar appointments on my phone. And everything works seamlessly between those twenty users. I can email the League of Cities without it bouncing back now, and they can email me. It was like overnight, as soon as we swapped over to that IT in a Box, to their server and got it off of ours, the blacklist problems went away, the "it's always down" problem went away. It, it's, it's just, it works.
So the server that you're utilizing is not even here in Georgetown?
It is not.
And that's, that's what?
It's cloud-based. Absolutely. We, we strongly encourage cities to stop buying technology assets. It's the most, it's the fastest depreciating expense. And we're all about, when we, when we looked at how we were going to take, we've been in this market, working with cities for years. And when we looked at taking a set of solutions to cities, one of the first things that we wanted to work out was, how can we do this and eliminate that capital expense, move it to an operating expense model? And, and, and also keep it perpetual. Those upgrades, be, being on the latest version that Andrew's talking about, how he had that happen overnight, it's indefinite. So next year, when Microsoft releases the new version, and it goes from 2013 to 2014, all the city's employees are going to get those upgrades at no additional cost. It's totally eliminating that licensing fee.
So all the licensing for the twenty, that's all?
That's included.
That's in the four thousand per month that we're paying right now?
That's right, for the twenty. It's exactly right. And, and the labor to upgrade them from version 2013 to version 2014 is included too. That's covered.
What, what, who else do you all provide service to? Obviously, you've talked about different municipalities, but what, what other areas?
Well, the Kentucky League of Cities is one of our customers. We're not in the private sector in Kentucky, but we are in the private sector in Georgia. Then there's other state leagues, Virginia and Maine, that we provide a set of services, infrastructure services to. In the private sector, we're all over the place. We have nonprofits that depend on us, we have churches that depend on us, real estate offices. It, that, we're, publicly, we appear as a municipal exclusive company, but we've been in the private sector for quite a while, just as long as we've been working in the public sector.
Did you say six years?
Oh, I've been with the company for six years. I've been in this infrastructure side of things for sixteen years. And Sufficiency has been working with state leagues and cities since 2001. So twelve years.
And how long have they been in the private sector?
The whole time. We were all, we were, we were always in the private sector. We, we, in the, around 2006, we decided to focus exclusively on how we can help public safety, how we can help public works, how we can help City Hall. And that's where IT in a Box kind of got started.
There is a House Bill moving through the legislature right now, House Bill, which is sponsored by the State Auditor, a host of other legislators, that will put new demands on governmental entities to, one, safeguard their systems, safeguard their data, and have an active plan in place to notify your citizens, should there ever be a breach of information, be it utilities, information in your tax systems, or what, net profit reports, or whatever you put in your, your software environment. So I can assure you that the league is fully supportive of IT in a Box being a solution to help cities meet the requirements of that House Bill. And I don't know the status today, but I'm assuming it's-
The league is, the league is behind it. And the reason they're, they're behind it is because they, they can't not be, for starters. And I, and when the auditor, if it's anything like House Bill one, which was the special district bill last year, once he gets behind it, it's a sure thing. I mean, you can never predict.
We're assuming it'll pass.
It has, you, almost universal support, so.
It sounds like, though, if we, if we go through with this plan here, that we probably, or maybe might not have to hire somebody. That was the intention, that we were, we were desperately needing somebody last week.
We're starting to be able to take a look at it in six months.
And-
Part of the process of, of creating it, man.
A lot of stuff going to be off, off-site that you're going to take care of, which, that's something she won't have to deal with.
That's right.
It's going to give her a lot more free time, but, you know, we're in a situation where we need to do something, period, so.
And I, honestly, I think it'd be appropriate to come back in six months and give you an update, you know?
Sure.
If you go with this plan that we've outlined, we'll be here to update you periodically.
That's right.
Absolutely.
Drawbacks, or if there's pitfalls.
I, I would expect that as well. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't go into this with the expectation, not putting words in your mouth, that this would fix it without having the need for staff.
Want to see what we need.
It'll help us, and it'll help us with the dialogue with the county, because they've been county nicer.
Different type of person, if we can get the infrastructure right. You know, it depends on whether you want a sophisticated engineer, or if you want an IT technician that can handle day-to-day user needs.
Right.
You can make that decision at the appropriate time.
But you can, you can also tell us what we really need at that appropriate time, too.
Give you suggestions.
There you go.
Absolutely.
Right.
The tech committee, and, and let them make the decision what to recommend.
Andrew, we, we talked with Jen early on about developing a ticket system in order to bill out. Was that discussed in the interlocal meeting? Because I think what a lot of people don't understand is the services that we provide to the interlocals, not only Jen's time, but in terms of bandwidth and everything, that, that the cost is not passed on to the, to the, to those interlocal agencies. Have we, have we started that process?
Well, that was, it was kind of the, kind of the idea of having that meeting, was to talk about that. And we didn't, we didn't really dig into it, but it has been brought up, for instance, with Parks and Rec. You know, they sort of, they're not like building inspection, electrical inspection, in that their stuff, one, is not housed here. And two, they, they sort of have their own IT infrastructure, if you will, and, and they, for the most part, maintain it. But sometimes, they call Jen, and they say, "We got a problem. We can't fix it. Our contract folks can't fix it. Can you help?" And that would be the perfect time where Jen could say, "Okay, for whatever dollars an hour, we'll create a ticket, we'll come and we'll fix the problem, and we'll charge it to you." So I still think that's on the table. It's a, it's a, it's an opportunity to do something like that. We haven't really been able to have a serious conversation about it yet. But it's, it's definitely an option.
But that is, I mean, you know, as we work through these interlocals, as we have for the last two years, that's been one thing that's been very clear, is that they would share in half the expenses, whether that come from the department or straight from the county government. Is it, is it, have we not presented it in such a way to recoup the expenses?
That, I think that is the real crux of the matter, is that we have never, no one has ever said, "Okay, whoever did the work spent five hours today of IT work that benefited Parks and Rec Department, or electrical inspection, or building inspection." It's always just, "The city took care of it." And so there does need to either be a conversation about how you properly allocate that, or the other alternative is, you split everybody out, and you let them take care of it. For instance, if you were to take the server out of the basement for planning and zoning, and move it back over to planning and zoning, and let them take care of their IT needs and their connection to P V A's office, theoretically, that, that fee, that cost gets split fifty-fifty automatically. And that's a much simpler method in my mind than having the city, who really has no stake in it, other than it's in our basement, billing for the cost of maintaining it. Now, we do have a stake in having access to that data, but there are other ways that we take care of that, with backdoor connections or whatever. So the point is, there are multiple ways to look at fixing the problem. And we don't just want to assume that one is correct and the other one isn't. So that's the whole point of getting that plan, taking it through the Technology Committee, having them evaluate, talk to the folks at planning and zoning, talk to the folks at electrical inspection. You know, the, the stuff that, that Jim was talking about the last time that he was here? I mean, that's a, that's a real solution that we can look at. But Jen's point was, you can't just, you can't just, you know, flip the switch without, without consulting all the parties first and making sure that it's actually going to fix it. What other things do you have to do in addition to that software to fix the problem? And that's the conversation that we're going to have, that we would love to be able to have with the folks at Sufficiency.
Andrew, along those lines, what you're talking about, and I think I understand what Brad's saying, is it relates to the IT department trying to bill the county for, you know, whatever time is allocated with them. What we've got to be aware of, or maybe cognizant of, is the time that they spend, like with electrical inspection, with time in the city. Are, are we going to get, and I think that's where the interlocal needs to come in. Because we don't want them to say, "Okay, well, if you're going to do that, we're going to start billing you for the time that we spend in the city," when eighty percent of it, you know, although it's split fifty-fifty, eighty percent of it could be allocated towards the city.
Right.
Same thing with some of the other departments. So be aware of that, as you have that conversation.
Clint, you hear the problem we're having?
It sounds like money.
Yeah, there you go.
It sounds like money. That's what, I mean, it, it's more than technology.
Well, it's- And there's two sides of Court Street.
I got you.
Quick comment.
Sure.
With, with the improvements that it sounds like are on the horizon, and the efficiencies that, that can perhaps be gained, it leads me to believe that additional employment, at least on the city's behalf, may not be necessary. I mean, if we've been getting by for the past, and I know we're just getting by, maybe we're even losing ground, quite honestly. I understand all that. But that's one of the benefits of having you all and having the improved technology, is to maybe make us even more efficient.
What, what I would like to see the city do is assess that again at the end of that period. That's, what I know right now is, to succeed, to meet these goals, and to do it in a reasonable timeframe, we're going to have to have somebody here for you. And I know that because Andrew's light, the light switch getting flipped and going overnight from one version of technology to the latest version, that only happened because we put our employee here. We put him on the ground. He was here for days on end, okay? And when I had this conversation with Andrew and Jen last week, I, I drew that conclusion really quickly. Right now, I know you need us here. What, what, what we need to do at the end of that period is reassess. And then I'll be happy to help make recommendations on that. But right now, I can't speak to it. I just know that you, we need to get Jen focused on the upper, the upper level, the IT director level stuff that she needs to be doing for the city, and get everybody moving in that direction. And to do that, Sufficiency wants to put one of our people here to make that happen.
And what are the things that she, that she needs to be focused on?
Sure. The, the pending list on this third page here with the ETAs, I, the, the big things, she's got to get some software and systems implemented. She's got to look at, your phone system is out of date. And the, the, I've put the word bandwidth on here, but there's a whole lot of sort of under-foundation level things that need to be reviewed. Auditing and assessing those things and documenting those things are all items that we can help her with. So that she can help us help make decisions on what you want to do with, with, with your website, get that underway. Those types of things. And, and also, I want to make sure that we free her time up, so she can do things like sit down and look at quotes from three different vendors that want to come in and provide phone and internet connectivity to the city. You know, that's where, that's where we need her to be able to, to do that. And she can't do that if she's doing help desk all day long.
Well, two weeks ago, the sky was falling. And so, and we didn't know, we knew that we had hired you all back some time ago, but we didn't realize that you were here working and had, in two weeks' time from there to here, so much seems to have transpired that the sky's not falling anymore, and I'm a whole lot more comfortable, because after that meeting, I- that meeting, I even went out and talked to two different computer, uh, software handlers to, to talk to them about things that the city was, was facing and what was going on. So, I'm happy that you're here.
Great.
And things seem much more calm and much more under control now. And yes, like Kelly said, definitely bring you back to talk to us, let us know what's going on and, and all.
We want you to have transparency with our services. I want to be able to answer any questions that you have for them, and, and we can do that on an ongoing basis.
Well, I would like to, if, if we decide to do this, I would like for them to come back once a month or so and just give us an update of what's going on.
Don't forget they're in Georgia.
Well, on-site guy will be, though, right?
Kirby, Kirby's here.
That's true. The on-site guy will be sitting right here.
Well, and the IT, I mean, the nine-member IT committee is going to be happening.
And I need a technical-
There you go.
Yeah.
We will, we will absolutely be a part of this relationship. We will be as visible as you need us to be on that, and to, to that point, we already are providing a monthly report. When you, when you go all-in with us, you go to a hundred percent, there's a report that will be available to you that'll show you state of the union, and it's going to have some techno-speak on there, but it also has, uh, the, the roadmap. It's going to have the items on there, and, and that's updated on a monthly basis. I know that because I produced the report. So, um, we can arm, we can arm your committee with that information, they can look at that on a regular basis.
Is the eighty users going to cover us a hundred percent?
My understanding is that it will cover you a hundred percent. There's some shared assets, it's, it's some of the departments, but it's not going to cover public safety, I mean, the PD, the police department.
But it will cover the fire department?
It's going to cover, yes, a, absolutely, yes.
Oh, that cover, is that PVA included? Is that?
The only, the only ones that are covered, um, in this proposal are the ones listed in those columns on the second page, which would be City Hall Cemetery, Fire Department, Public Works, Building Inspection, and Electrical Inspection.
So, planning and zoning would not be part of that?
Planning and zoning is not currently considered in this.
Now, and the police department has a contract, because we've had that for several years. We have a contract, it's off-site contract, and that the police department handles separate from anything else in the city.
Right.
It's all handled in its own-
So, that's why we didn't consider that.
Right. They have their own IT.
Plus, you're also getting the possibility of facility, that's a very important time to be looking at your technology, infrastructure, and the building, and how you're going to communicate, get wireless, and whatever.
Now, does that, does that stay with the provider that they're with now handling that, or?
I would assume that it would, if they're happy with that provider, yes.
Okay. Because there don't seem to be much problems, because we've got it off-site, there doesn't ever seem to be much problems that happen in the police department.
Right.
And you don't want there to be, so.
Right.
Got a couple of questions.
Sure.
When you look at the, the current coverage, user, of the user current coverage, it's nineteen percent, and then I guess this three-to-six-month period, we're going to go to one hundred percent.
Right.
Is there, and if you look at the, the nineteen percent, if you go across each one of those li, items, it's typically the help desk and the server and desktop management. Is there a way to break down that, that seven thousand dollar a month cost that we're looking to increase the cost by? Can you break it down-
We do.
-per department?
Oh-
And see what that cost is going to be? As an example, what is it going to cost to get Building Inspection up to one hundred percent? What is it going to cost to get Electrical Inspection to one hundred percent? Can we break, are we able to break the cost down?
Absolutely. What, um, what, I, I won't be, I won't be able to do it on the fly for you, but we can, what we would do is the subscriber report, which is what we would send in on a monthly basis, it'll be broken out by department already, and then we can tell you, based on the number of people in each of those departments, what their portion of the cost would be. Would that meet your need?
You, I hope-
She would accept, like, right now, we know first name, last name, we would just need to know first name, last name, and the department they're in, and then we could pull that back out, so for, for example, on an invoice, you'd be able to see it. If you need to see that, um, for this proposal, we can also do that.
Would it be beneficial, maybe, to get that as part of the proposal, instead of after the fact, after we've done the work, or not?
Probably a pretty easy thing to do.
It's not, that's-
I mean, all you're talking about, basically, it's a set number of users, and you'll allocate twelve of those users to fire, and thirty of those users to Public Works, and five of those users to Building Inspection, it's pretty easy to do, so it's not as bad as doing it.
That's not a problem, yeah.
Can, can we, can we do that, if that's, if everybody's in agreement on that?
I'm sure Clint can get the information to you all, okay?
Absolutely.
He'll go to, I guess, go to the committee next week, at the end of Wednesday.
Second question is, at the end of that three-to-six months, obviously, we're going to come back and meet as a whole again and decide what the next step is.
Right.
At that point, does that seven thousand dollars go away if we decide to do nothing else at that point, and then it reverts back to the current cost of the forty-five hundred dollars?
That would be up to, that would be up to the city as to whether or not they wanted to reduce their headcount, but what, what, what we would want, we would hope to see is that you all would keep a hundred percent supported indefinitely.
Which would revert back to the eleven thousand dollars a month, yeah?
Yeah. In other words, if you're supporting eighty users and everybody's happy, would you want to go back to twenty, and have those other sixty?
No, I mean, that, that makes perfect sense, yeah. Sorry, I didn't, sorry about that.
That would be something you could consider.
But if we didn't change that, it would stay at that eleven thousand dollar a month?
That's right.
Indefinitely out into the future.
That's right.
Okay. Another question is, is, I know we've talked about not just fixing the problems that you've listed here on these documents, but then assessing other items that need to be looked at and addressed as well. Is that going to be a different cost than what you've identified here, or is that going to be included in this price that's listed?
We would be looking at, um, looking to Jen, to work with Jen on that. So, as other items come up, for example, she's, I, I think one of the things that she wants to get done is to meet with the different departments and ask them, "What's not on our radar that we need to be working on for you?" Um, so, you know, our, our expertise, we're not billing by the hour, it's literally the number of subscribed users. We call those sorts of things vendor management. So, as long as you're engaged, and we're a hundred percent, um, engaged with the city, then there's no, there's not additional fees for having us look at and review projects and that sort of thing. Now, we do, there are, there's a, there is scope, there's a limitation of scope in, as far as implementing, for example, um, having us, uh, I'm trying to think of an example, having us install specific types of hardwares outside of the scope, but those things, you have the benefit of having access to Jen, that's what she would be doing in a, in those situations. If we're doing things like looking at strategy by department, if we're making recommendations, all of that's included, as long as the city stays engaged.
Just, I know you're not going to be able to give me a definite time period because of the fact that you've not really identified all the issues that need to be looked at, Jen. If, if you were to give us a, an estimate, and I don't know if you can even do this or not, to give us a total assessment of what needs to be fixed, what needs to be looked at, I mean, are we looking at maybe forty hours, are we looking at eighty hours to do that total assessment, or?
It will really depend on, once we, so, one of the things that we'll be doing as we take on the other sixty users, is we'll be deploying our management and monitoring solutions into your environment. That feeds back in real time, it alerts us, right? On the health of the equipment, it gives us an understanding of the problems in the environment. Until we have that, I can't really even begin to tell you. I, I can tell you that in, in similar-sized environments in the past, and, and, and within about two quarters of actually getting rolled out and starting our documentation efforts, we have a lay of the land. Um, that's one of the reasons that I felt that three-to-six-month window would be good for the city.
Mayor, I've got one question for you, if I could. This is my last question. This committee that we've, you've mentioned earlier in your meeting, in the, in the meeting, at the end of the day, and, and am I correct, I think Mr. Lesby might have mentioned it, so I don't mean to repeat this, but I just want to ask for clarification purposes, is this committee coming back to the full city council before any actions are taken on any item?
Absolutely. All decisions have to be-
To the full council?
-made right here.
Okay.
They'll be sorting through everything and, and be making recommendations and helping-
And obviously, there'll be another inter-local meeting as well, you know, talking about some of the stuff that's been raised tonight.
Mm-hmm.
You know, this is the direction that the inter-local task force wanted to go in, basically.
I hope that we can, we've got another scheduled one the week after next, to talk about more inter-locals anyway, so maybe we can bring some more stuff up then.
And it's, it's an important point, because but for the fact that right now, our IT department, seventy percent of their time, of her time, is spent working on building inspection and electrical inspection issues, but are shared departments. Been told that she literally, every day, the first thing she does is rebuilds the index for, for the databases on EI and BI. And then the other big problem, well, not, I mean, I don't mean to scare you, but the other prob, you kind of looked at me, you're like, "Oh, no." Uh, the other problem is the, is the issue of bandwidth and, and the big chunks of data that, that are being demanded by, well, by me and a few others, as far as, through the GIS realtors and, and, and those sorts, um, you know, interfering with email and, and just the bandwidth and server side. So, those two issues have to do with joint agencies, and but for those issues, I don't know if we'd be having this conversation tonight. I don't know if we'd be talking and going from twenty users to eighty users, or four thousand dollars a month to eleven-five a month. So, if you do it by, if you reckon it by, um, users, that's one way, but it is unavoidable that most of the problem right now is being caused by the demands of some joint agencies that have to be, that have to be working. Literally, the official documentation that is submitted to the state is not a paper document for building inspection, electrical inspection, it's, it's a piece of data somewhere in the server, and if that server goes down, they don't have it. So, you know, my understanding is that it has to be a cost, and it has to be expressed, at least the joint cost has to be expressed beyond just, just the users, you know, just a fraction of the eighty users. So, that's something we'll bring up.
Well, the, um, as I said earlier, you know, the way that we, the way that we do this with subscribers, it's the, the way we typically report on it. If that helps, or it moves you in the right direction, um, then, you know, by all means. If you all need us, though, with the engineer that we would put on-site, if you need us to, uh, further detail report the time, what the time is spent on, so that you have record of that, we have all those capabilities, the city doesn't have to implement that. That's why I put ticketing system as one of the items that's already accomplished. The city's not going to have to implement those things. You don't have to buy the licensing, you don't have to run it yourself, we're going to be providing all of that, uh, right out of, right up, um, in, built into this platform.
So, the IT in a Box that you're providing is the same list of services, and what you're doing, what you're doing right now for the city is expressed here in the IT in a Box, is that correct?
That's correct.
You're not doing anything beyond what's already on this page, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so, what you're expanding, what you're proposing to expand is just all these services that right now we're purchasing for twenty users, we're now going to expense that out to eighty users, and all the various vicissitudes that might strike. Twenty users are going to be multiplied by four, basically, is what you're saying, is that right?
Right.
Okay. Plus the, plus the, the engineer.
Yeah, the engineer, yeah, so the, yeah, the engineer would be provided, and that wouldn't be provided at any additional cost.
Okay.
The, the two items that, that Mr. Singer just mentioned, where, where do those fall on the timeline of, of being repaired or resolved?
The, for the, 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 yeah, and the, the bandwidth, that's actually on, uh, we put those as immediate goals, so I have those in Q1 and Q2. If you'll look on that third page, infrastructure, network expansion, infrastructure, inter-local support, and, uh, bandwidth are all either Q2 or Q1, because we see those as priority items that need to be addressed.
All right. So, what, what, what is immediate? In thirty days?
Again, we're, one, we have to get engaged, we, we don't, it's one of those things where I can't tell you what I don't know yet. So, when we roll out our platform across, uh, the, the rest of the city's infrastructure, that's going to give us a better idea, and when we start working with the users directly, that's going to give us a better idea.
In terms of the on-site engineer, obviously, there's a huge difference between being able to utilize him for three months and six months.
Right.
What, uh, what criteria would you all use to judge whether we can keep him for six months, or he needs to go with three weeks and a day?
That roadmap.
Okay.
In other words, if, 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 if what we're telling you is that by engaging with us, we're going to help the city meet those goals, we have to be able to meet those goals before we take the engineer offsite.
Okay.
So, that's eighty users up and running then?
That's right.
And we're in the second month of the first quarter, right?
Right.
So, the sooner we can get this to the committee, and they, or they'll make you a recommendation and you act, the sooner we can get things underway.
What, what would we expect? I mean, the first, if it's going to be the third Wednesday of the month, that's next Wednesday, the nineteenth, would be our first meeting. What, what would we expect, what would you expect the committee to do next Wednesday?
Uh, possibly, uh, review exactly the same information that we've provided to you tonight. Andrew will be there. I've offered to come back if he feels there's a need. Again, I can't address technical, but I can probably answer most of the questions, and those of you who are on that committee that are here tonight should be able to provide some answers. And then that committee would simply have to endorse the proposal and bring it back here.
I think it'd be a great first meeting for them.
Okay. I think the other thing to keep in mind is that the, or at least in, in my mind, we're, want to look at what's going to happen, or what we can do within a six-month period, or review this fully at the end of six months, which would put us mid-July. I think that's something we have to recognize at this point, um, before we go on. We'd be into a new budget, we'd be passing, pass the budget season, we'd be in a new budget.
Anything else?
The other, the only other request that's related, I, I would make another request that the inter-local group, at some point in the near future, set an evening meeting.
Okay.
That'd be nice, yeah. I'd like that, actually.
Five o'clock, count it, evening?
I don't know, is it dinner hour? Oh.
Yes, it's possible, man.
I don't know if that's evening dress or not, I'm going to check my memos.
They wait till you give a seat up, Brad.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor. Guys, thank you for being here. I think we're a lot more enlightened than we were coming in.
Glad we could help. Thank you all very much for giving time.
And I look forward to this committee really blending a helping hand.
Yep.
Thanks, Clint. Thanks, Kirby.
Thank you, Kirby.
All right. Mr. [inaudible]. You're up next, Senator Town.
Um, back before you tonight, Gregory Fitzsimmons, Senator Town, is back to, um, bringing back some findings after his presentation in the last council meeting.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the, uh, opportunity to update you all, and let me pass out my information. Remember, last time, we, uh, reviewed the sort of major issues that we have at the Center of Town Community Center, and, um, we left our discussion with the idea of establishing what I would call a, a budget for the project. All construction projects need a budget, otherwise you're, you'll spend more money Otherwise, you're, you'll spend more money than you need to spend. And that's not a good idea for any municipality. And the idea was to take our nine thousand two hundred and seventy square foot building and apply approximately a forty-five dollar square foot cost to that, which is roughly four hundred seventeen thousand three hundred and ninety dollars, exactly. And then, based on the fact that we have to renovate the entire building, but we have some specific needs in the HVAC, the electric, the plumbing, I broke out the divisions of construction and then began to break down the prices so that I could see that if we were going to have a budget of forty-five dollars a square foot, what would be a reasonable square foot cost for the electric system. And you can see that's seven dollars and seventy-five cents. I think that's a little bit low to be able to fully install a new electric system in that building. But proportionally, based on other projects, that's a factor that would represent the electric work needed in the building, based on other projects that I've worked on. The electric or the HVAC system, the other major expenditure, sixteen dollars a square foot are almost one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, I would like to see that figure be a little bit higher, as we talked about last time, somewhere in the eighteen or nineteen dollar square foot range to have a more efficient electric system and more efficient HVAC system. And in comparison to the numbers that I provided for the different categories at forty-five dollars square foot, further down the page, I listed what I would call the limited renovation price at the four hundred and twenty thousand dollars plus or minus. And then, what I would think is more the reasonable full renovation price at eighty-five dollars a square foot or that seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars that we talked about last time. The difference between the two, three hundred thousand some dollars, are items that you would like to have in a building. They would include insulating the building that is not included in that forty-five dollars a square foot. It would include a more efficient heating and air conditioning system so that when the building is renovated, you would have lower utility bills. Under the forty-five dollars square foot, we put in a heating and air conditioning system that would use a lot more energy. That would be the difference in the cost. Under the forty-five dollars square foot, we'd have existing windows in the building. Under the more expensive renovation, we would put in energy-efficient windows. A number of those items that make the difference in the three hundred thousand dollars would, would pay for themselves over the life cycle of the building. We would be using better materials, they would require less maintenance, they would last longer, and the building would be more sound because of the investment. A little bit further down the page, I listed two similar projects that we talked about before, the Carver Community Center in Lexington and the Sharpsburg Community Center. The Carver Center is a larger building, twenty-six thousand square feet. It benefits from economies of scale. When you do more work, your project is larger, the funds, you get a little more value out of the funds. We were able to do that project for forty-eight dollars a square foot. But we didn't do any restroom work. We didn't do any plumbing work. We did replace the roof there. But in some ways, it's a comparable cost. That's why I feel like it, the target price of forty-five dollars square foot may be achievable. On the other side of it, the Sharpsburg Community Center is essentially a new building, even though we started out with the shell of the gymnasium. So, you could see that if we would be somewhere in between that forty-eight dollars and the hundred and thirty dollars a square foot at eighty-five, we should reasonably be able to fully renovate the center. And then, if in fact the budget for the project needs to be less than that to just begin to figure out how to accomplish the construction needed for the forty-five dollars a square foot. My vision of that forty-five, forty-five dollar square foot center is, the building looks pretty much like it does today. When you would move into it, it would have a fresh coat of paint on it, but it would still be that same center with the new restrooms. But there probably wouldn't be any other walls on the inside except for those that would create the corridors. We wouldn't be able to break it down into the individual rooms needed for the other programs because every time you would add a door or, you know, segment a wall, you would add to that cost. We would need to get it down to as low as possible. So, essentially, the shell of the building would be, would be finished. We'd have a new group of restrooms inside painted and then have a public side and a private side, but not divided up into the spaces that the current center is divided up into. So, with that in mind, and I'm sure you've all had a chance to read the report a little bit, I'll open it up for questions because I really haven't got too many great conclusions.
Did you start, I can't remember last time. Did we, did you start with a forty-five dollar square foot figure in mind?
Uh, no. Mr. Penn, I believe, posed that as a sort of...
But when you, but when you did these calculations over the last two weeks, you started with a forty-five dollars per square foot figure?
Right. I said, if that is our number, we're going to spend half a million dollars on this center. We have nine thousand so many square feet. In my thirty years' history of, of projects, HVAC ranges somewhere between twenty-five and forty-five percent of a given project. So, kind of applying those rules of thumb, came up with these figures. If it is going to be forty-five dollars a square foot, we're going to spend money on each of these construction items because we need something in each of these categories. This is how I would break down that forty-five dollars.
Does it get us, does this get us to code at forty-five dollars? It does?
Yeah. Yeah, that's the intention. But it would be, you know, a minimum electrical system. As soon as you begin to operate inside the building, you'd want to add electric outlets. It's a little bit like, I don't think we retread tires anymore, do we? But you'd be a little bit like retreading the building. You wouldn't really be improving it. You would just be, well, you would be improving because we have to bring it up to code. It's not quite the same as spending funds.
Sort of like a used tire instead of a new tire, what you're saying?
Right. Yeah.
Is the Carver, is the Carver Center, that comparison you made, is that the one that's off Maxwell Patterson Street?
Patterson School, yes. It's off of, right. Where Newtown Pike's going to come through.
I think another, another relevant piece that Greg didn't mention is, like he said, he took, he took the percentages and sort of applied it to forty-five dollars and come up with sixteen dollars an hour for HVAC and seven dollars and seventy-five cents for electric. That doesn't take into consideration the fact that this is a public work project and therefore prevailing wage applies. You have to pay the minimum prevailing wage. So, I'm thinking in some of those cases that those amounts wouldn't, wouldn't get you up to prevailing wage. I think you could probably, I think we talked about it. Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you could talk about adding another fifteen percent on, to the, to the major trades. I don't know, I can't remember what the trades are. It's four or five, but...
That would be taken into consideration in, in the next step in the project. The two other projects, Carver and Sharpsburg, they were both wage-scale projects. Another item that, that we've learned and maybe been shared with council in the past, but it's new to me, there's a estimate to tear down the center in the neighborhood of seventy thousand dollars to tear down and dispose of all the materials there. We've gotten the utility costs for the last seven years and without really analyzing them, it's not really good to share anything about, about that. But from my preliminary view, it doesn't look like with a new heating and air conditioning system, you should be able to reduce the current utility bills.
Mayor, it sounds like you're saying bad news, quite honestly. For, for even the reduced cost that he's coming up with. I mean, it's, it's not getting us where we'd want to be.
Going back to basically where we were.
Yeah. And, you know, if you finance that cost, you'd be spending about three thousand dollars a month is essentially what that pay, we'd be better off to donate three thousand dollars a month towards the entity and let them go lease a nice space. My thought right now is that we consider the demolition and turn it into green space until we have a, another option. You're, you're, you were also telling us at the last meeting that a hundred dollars a square foot, I think. Was that the number that you said was probably more realistic?
You know, the difference between fifteen dollars a square foot between eighty-five and the hundred, I don't think it's relevant to discussion at this point. You know, we haven't spent any time sort of designing a new facility and calculating materials and the research necessary to give you that information.
Yeah, it's got water issues. I mean, they're just, they're just, the negatives seem to be on and on. And I don't know where we want to go from here as a group, but, you know, I just don't see it, to me personally, as being a viable option.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just concerned that we started off with a forty-five dollar per square foot figure and then we fit the budget to match that figure that I'm not still sure that we're going to be able to get. Especially when, I'm glad Andrew brought up about the prevailing wage. Especially with the prevailing wage, I don't know if we can, you know, get to the minimum code. And I don't know if we really necessarily want to do just minimum code. Versus what David's talking about.
That's the sort of crux of the issue here. You know, how much money does it take to renovate the building, bring it up to code? And will you be pleased with that? And then, is this the opportunity? Then, if you are, just like with your IT discussion, you're seeing good progress and you see this is an opportunity to move forward. You know, this project is somewhat the same way.
If we had a, a major rain which causes flooding, whether it be tomorrow, six months, six years down the road, could we be, if we did do something and move forward, could we be right back in the same boat we're in today?
Certainly, because of the fact that the floor level of the building is right at the same grade of your storm inlet. And if there's some reason the storm inlet gets backed up, the water's going to go into the building. And if that hasn't happened already, you know, then I would think there's a pretty good chance it's not going to happen because we've seen various conditions, especially whichever night we had where we had the ice and then it rained right on top. That, that, a lot of storm drains blocked up under those conditions. And if you didn't experience anything then, that's a good sign.
Another quick question for you. You, you mentioned the cost of demolition. I think it was just a rough estimate of seventy thousand dollars. Did that include hauling off the material?
Yeah, hauling off and that's the major...
Clearing the site.
Yeah. Well, you know, one thought would be, I mean, it's, it's all concrete and concrete block. For the most part, I know there's, there's some other material there. But what if, what if we were to, to demolish that material into a compactable material and left it there on site? That'd save some money, wouldn't it?
All right. Yeah, I think you would. Get tired of looking at that pile pretty quickly.
Well, we would. Now, I didn't intend to leave it that way.
Carry one handful at a time.
There are companies now that recycling concrete, concrete block. There are companies now to come on site with the machines. They, they grind that up and take it away.
I've had some experience with that.
Right.
With, with all due respect on discussing the negatives of the building, I will reference the, the attendance report that Jerry sent us after our last meeting showing in that building twenty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety-seven visits by the kids of that section of town. You know, we, and I guess I would like, if, if Jerry is willing, or Robin, either one, to kind of go over which ones we've been able to relocate, what we've not been able to relocate. I understand we can stack the negatives up and negatives, about a half a million negatives. There's no doubt about it. But I, I guess my question to Parks and Rec is, how many of those programs have we been able to move? Have the, outside of Checkpoint, you know, things that you all are directly responsible for? Because I, I do think that we have a certain, I do think we have a certain obligation to both Parks and Rec, the programming, and the kids, and, and adults who are part of that to, to at least consider the, the rubble that's being proposed down there. So, can you all, can either one of you talk about the programming down there? And what's, what we've been able to maintain?
There were several programs that were done out there. Checkpoint, obviously, was one of them, but that's not one of our programs. That's a United Way program that has just been in a partnership with Parks and Recreation for the last, what, twenty years or so. You know, we held our Kids World program down there. We've done our Fun Express program down there. Those, those things have been moved. Fun Express primarily out to the pavilion just because it's a little bit easier to get in and out of. But Kids World has been moved out to the County Barn as well through the summer and to the pavilion as well. And again, that is limited numbers because of the capacity that we're able to have. We have obviously not been able to do a lot of the kind of street dances and open, you know, game room kind of things because those, we don't have space for those things. So, those things are in storage right now, actually. So, other than them being able to come into the pavilion and partake in, you know, basically Kids World and I think there's a couple of other smaller programs that, I'm trying to think off the top of my head because I don't have them all in front of me. Some of them, we've been able to incorporate within the pavilion attendance and things like that. Special Olympics is obviously something that we're, we're going to, you know, not in the same capacity that we have at the Center of Town, but we've been able to incorporate a lot of those individuals who were coming to the Center of Town into some things within the pavilion. You know, but like I've said, you know, those numbers have, have gone down just due to capacity and space and, and the different types of building that we're being able to offer them with the County Barn and then obviously the pavilion and the pro. And then, you have to think we're competing, we're competing for, for space and time and those kinds of things at the pavilion as well because that is a fully functioning community center as well. So, you know, trying to incorporate additional programs in there for a community center that wasn't necessarily designed for the specifics of what the Center of Town. Each one of our community centers really services its own. And we kind of talked about this last, you know, last meeting. It really services its own different, unique community in that, in that building. So, example, you know, the Ed Davis Learning Center is strictly geared towards learning and the programming and the partnerships that go on with there are about learning. You know, the Center of Town had its own unique aspect of programmatic things that were going on. And so, it's difficult to take them from that area and incorporate them into a facility that's fully functioning with limited space as well. You know, like I said, we've been able to do that. I, I don't know exactly what the numbers are at this point, Brad, to be honest with you because a lot of that has been absorbed into those pavilion numbers. They still sign in when they come in. But, you know, a lot of that is absorbed into that pavilion number right now.
But the Kids World, you said you've been able to, have you been able to kind of maintain that programming?
We have that one and Fun Express. Those are the two major programs that we've been able to continue. And Robin, you can give better details about what the average attendance has been.
Looks like, are those year, are those two year-round as well?
Yes. Fun Express is year-round, Kids World is a summer camp.
But it looks like both of those combined only represented about sixteen percent of your total visits.
So, we did try to move some things out initially over to the County Barn, you know, and just due to, again, some of the capacity of spacing and then it just not being really what it needed to be, those attendance numbers just kind of dwindled away. So, you know, our hope was is that we could, you know, bring those things back to, those programs back in once the facility was available to us in that. And we've been communicating that kind of as well. You know, we don't know really what's going on with everything and we're working with the city on those things and trying to establish where we are with that. But that, our goal at least is not for those programs to disappear. Does that answer?
Mr. Mayor, does item?
Yes, ma'am.
Does item number ten have anything to do with this conversation? Does it relate? Should we talk about that as, come back and talk about the other or?
Yes, well, I was gonna, I was going to suggest we take a five-minute break first.
Yeah, we can do that.
So, I can, because I still got to get the language that I need, but, but yes.
The executive session is in conjunction with this. It is. Okay, let's take five minutes.
Of course, the heat.
Turn it up, we couldn't afford it.
I kind of thought it might go together.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
All in.
Okay, no action taken, we are back in regular session.
We've got cancer at.
Uh, next item on the agenda, city attorney.
Well?
Alcohol.
Are we done with the center of town as far as the public court portion?
Are we done?
I just took Cal, we've got that, so we're done with that.
There's no action item on there, so if you all want to move on, we move on.
Move on.
Move on.
Alright.
Consider it an update. Okay, you have in your packets? Uh, memorandum. And, uh, I'm gonna summarize it very briefly. About alcoholic beverage regulatory license fee.
Lot, just a moment, a lot of work has gone into this.
I can tell.
He has really, he has really had his nose to the grind on this.
Paradise Law.
So he, this is not a, a document that has been loosely put together. He, he has backing for everything he has in this statement.
Uh, that's the one you all emailed to us?
Yes.
I couldn't get mine, I couldn't print mine off.
There you go.
Well, it's back in the packet too.
Is it in the packet?
It's in the packet.
Yeah. I'll, like I said, I'll summarize it for you.
Alright.
Um, so the statute on our regulatory, uh, license fee, our alcoholic beverage regulatory license fee says, basically that we have to, our, um, fee needs to be at no more than a rate that will, well, fully reimburse us for the cost of policing, regulatory, administrative, for expenses related to the sale of alcoholic beverage. So, uh, what we really need is to make sure that our expenses are indeed related. And the statute uses the word reasonable, so we want to use reason to try to come up with what those, um, how those two are tied together, in other words, how the, um, policing costs are related to the sale of alcoholic beverages in the city. So we're not, we're not just talking about DUIs and public intoxications, we're talking about everything that's related to the sale of alcoholic beverages. There is a logical relationship between general policing costs and the sale of alcoholic beverage in a city. And the statistical analysis shows that that is not a weak relationship, it's a very strong one. It is a, one that is backed up by national data, it is one that is backed up by real data in the state of Kentucky, alcohol is a factor in, uh, anywhere from twenty-five to forty-five percent of crimes, depending on the type of crime, it's forty percent of violent crimes. Um, they did a survey and thirty, thirty-six percent of the convicted offenders, uh, in the corrections institutions estimate they were drinking at the time of the offense. You look at, what I did was I took all of the counties, and I apologize that it's counties, not cities, that's the way the state crime data works. Um, I took all the counties and I organized them by whether they were wet, whether they were dry, moist, or limited. Moist is, you got a dry county, wet city, and it, limited is, uh, restaurant. Um, you compare all of those wet cities and counties and, or I'm sorry, wet counties, and wet counties have more than double the crime that do dry counties. Um, moist have on the average about fifty-five crimes per purse, per one thousand people. Uh, dry is something like thirty. Look at, for instance, larcenies, wet counties have three hundred and fifty-eight percent more larcenies than does dry counties. And these statistics are consistent across, it's not just an urban suburban thing. I figured that might be what the issue was, so that's why first we split it into one thousand populations, so that would eliminate that part. They also went in and compared the smallest county, you look at the second largest, or the second smallest and the third smallest, one of them was wet, one of them was dry, but the wet was nearly double across the board. Um, it worked for medium-sized counties, it works for large-sized counties, so in other words, cities and counties that allow alcoholic beverage sales can expect to have higher crime. It's, it's just a fact of life, and therefore, you're gonna expect to have higher police costs.
What percent did you say?
Of what?
More crime?
Uh, well, if you, if you look at, at statewide, between a dry county and a moist county, uh, a dry county has thirty, the average of thirty point six-two crimes per one thousand, and wet has seventy-two point one-eight, so it's a hundred and thirty percent more on average.
I'm gonna jump in and ask a question then.
Please.
If I may. Does that then assume that when we became moist and now wet, that our crime statistics have followed that same line, that same trend line? Are we up a hundred and forty-some percent?
Well.
And I, I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing the regulation, or the, the regulatory fee, what I'm saying is, if we by passing this have, have, have enabled our crime rates to go through the roof, we got a problem.
Well, whoa, whoa, you talk about this body, we didn't pass this. Well now, we passed the liquor stores, we passed package sales.
Well, the public did.
Public did.
Public did. Correct, correct. We, we, we.
We just regulated it.
Well, I, I guess, back to my original question.
Let me try to answer the question, and I'll have to answer it in a multi-part answer. First, um, I tried to go back as far as I possibly could into state data, and after you get back past about nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, it starts to get real fuzzy. Um, their numbers aren't, their numbers are incomplete, and they had different, like eighteen different reporting systems. Um, and so I think we went limited, we didn't go, we didn't go moist, we went limited sometime back in oh, maybe oh-one. Um, so making a comparison between pre-oh-one and post-oh-one really wasn't easy to do. Um, and also, realize that going from dry to limited is not nearly the same impact as going from dry to wet, or even from limited to wet. In our case, we are going from limited to wet in a moist county, and it go, it gets really confusing. The point is, the general statistics hold, and it's, it's proven by the fact that when you do the analysis, um, when you combine that analysis of higher crime in wet areas versus dry areas, you, you have to assume that there is some merit to that. When you compare one city of the exact same population to another city of the exact same population, and one is higher than the other, you can make that assumption. We will continue to evaluate what effect going wet has on our crimes, crime rate. We'll ha, we'll have to do that. But for now, we only really have the benefit of the most current data, which is the year two thousand twelve. Um, so what I'm saying is, based on that data, we are supported in the fee that we levy. Uh, we're not even halfway to what you, what one might consider fully reimbursed for the cost of policing the sale of alcoholic beverages.
Right. Probably one, probably one difference between, it's probably more a correlation than actually a cause-effect relationship, but probably one, one, one reason that we won't see maybe as big a jump in alcohol-related crimes due to go, due to going fully wet is our proximity to Lexington and the.
Right.
Yeah, we have about, what is it, uh, sixty, seventy percent of our population within about five miles of the county line, so they could go over, I, you know, back in the day, before we went fully wet, and go to the liquor store. And, um, so, not out of my personal, out of my personal knowledge.
Not your first rodeo.
Whatever. But anyway, that's, that's probably, so we, what we saw was a lot of attendant effects of being a fully wet community without necessarily, without being nearly moist. This is a weird conversation.
It is.
You're handling it really well.
A better, a better way of describing alcohol regulation than this, because, I don't know.
For the last twelve years, most of us have used the term moist incorrectly, we were limited.
It's true, and they actually changed their definition.
That limited.
I think what the alcohol sales, what's made the difference is convenience. They were getting the alcohol, as Mark said, on their side, and just the convenience that you're in the community right now.
Well, we just saw the, we just saw the costs.
Right.
And, but it was one of the arguments, if you remember during the referendum, is that, hey, you, we need to ca, capture this tax revenue so that we can spend the money to take care of the cost that we're already experiencing.
Nationwide statistics and research proves that density of alcoholic beverage outlets directly corresponds to crime rates. It's, it's, it's almost indisputable, the way the two tie together, and you've had cities that, cities recognize they don't want to go, they don't want to go the nuclear option, which is to go dry, and the policing and regulatory aspects are how they keep the cost and the crime under control. So, nobody, nobody is suggesting, I'm not suggesting that we, we abandon our evil ways and go back to being a dry city, I'm trying to get everybody to understand, and by everybody, I mean, not just this council, but, uh, anybody else.
This is not a document that has been loosely put together. He has backing for everything he has in this statement.
That's the one you all emailed to us?
Yes.
I couldn't get mine, I couldn't print mine off.
There you go.
Well, it's back in the packet too.
Is it in the packet?
It's in the packet.
Okay. I couldn't read it.
Like I said, I'll summarize it for you.
Alright.
So, the statute on our regulatory license fee, our alcoholic beverage regulatory license fee, says basically that we have to, our fee needs to be at no more than a rate that will fully reimburse us for the cost of policing, regulatory, administrative, for expenses related to the sale of alcoholic beverage. So, what we really need is to make sure that our expenses are indeed related, and the statute uses the word reasonable, so we want to use reason to try to come up with what those, how those two are tied together. In other words, how the policing costs are related to the sale of alcoholic beverages in the city. So, we're not, we're not just talking about DUIs and public intoxications, we're talking about everything that's related to the sale of alcoholic beverages. There is a logical relationship between general policing costs and the sale of alcoholic beverage in a city. And the statistical analysis shows that that is not a weak relationship, it's a very strong one. It is a one that is backed up by national data, it is one that is backed up by real data in the state of Kentucky. Alcohol is a factor in anywhere from 25 to 45% of crimes, depending on the type of crime. It's 40% of violent crimes. They did a survey, and 36% of the convicted offenders in corrections institutions estimate they were drinking at the time of the offense. You look at, what I did was I took all of the counties, and I apologize that it's counties, not cities, that's the way the state crime data works. I took all the counties and I organized them by whether they were wet, whether they were dry, moist, or limited. Moist is, you got a dry county, wet city, and limited is restaurant. You compare all of those wet cities and counties, and, I'm sorry, wet counties, and wet counties have more than double the crime that do dry counties. Moist have, on the average, about 55 crimes per person, per 1,000 people. Dry is something like 30. Look at, for instance, larcenies. Wet counties have 358% more larcenies than does dry counties. And these statistics are consistent across, it's not just an urban suburban thing. I figured that might be what the issue was, so that's why first we split into 1,000 populations, so that would eliminate that part. They also went in and compared the smallest county. You look at the second largest, or the second smallest, and the third smallest, one of them was wet, one of them was dry, but the wet was nearly double across the board. It worked for medium-sized counties, it works for large-sized counties. So, in other words, cities and counties that allow alcoholic beverage sales can expect to have higher crime. It's, it's just a fact of life, and therefore, you're going to expect to have higher police costs.
What percent did you say?
Of what?
More crime? Did you say a third or something?
If you look at statewide, between a dry county and a moist county, a dry county has 30, the average of 30.62 crimes per 1,000, and wet has 72.18. So, it's 130% more on average.
I'm gonna jump in and ask a question then.
Please.
If I may. Does that then assume that when we became moist and now wet, that our crime statistics have followed that same line, that same trend line? Are we up 140-some percent?
Well...
And I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing the regulation, or the regulatory fee, what I'm saying is, if we by passing this have, have, have enabled our crime rates to go through the roof...
We do.
We got a problem.
Well, whoa, whoa, whoa.
I don't think you do, but...
You talk about this body, we didn't pass this.
That's true.
Well, now, we passed the liquor stores, we passed package sales.
Well, the public did.
Public did.
Public did.
Correct, correct.
We, we, we...
We just regulated it.
Well, I, I guess, back to my original question...
Let me try to answer the question, and I'll have to answer it in a multi-part answer. First, I tried to go back as far as I possibly could into state data, and after you get back past about 1999, 2000, it starts to get real fuzzy. Their numbers aren't, their numbers are incomplete, and they had different, like 18 different reporting systems. And so, I think we went limited, we didn't go, we didn't go moist, we went limited sometime back in, oh, maybe 01. So, making a comparison between pre-01 and post-01 really wasn't easy to do. And also, realize that going from dry to limited is not nearly the same impact as going from dry to wet, or even from limited to wet. In our case, we are going from limited to wet in a moist county. It gets really confusing. The point is, the general statistics hold, and it's proven by the fact that when you do the analysis, when you combine that analysis of higher crime in wet areas versus dry areas, you, you have to assume that there is some merit to that. When you compare one city of the exact same population to another city of the exact same population, and one is higher than the other, you can make that assumption. We will continue to evaluate what effect going wet has on our crimes, crime rate. We'll ha, we'll have to do that. But for now, we only really have the benefit of the most current data, which is the year 2012. So, what I'm saying is, based on that data, we are supported in the fee that we levy. We're not even halfway to what, what one might consider fully reimbursed for the cost of policing, the sale of alcoholic beverages.
Right. Probably one, probably one difference between, it's probably more a correlation than actually a cause-effect relationship, but probably one, one, one reason that we won't see maybe as big a jump in alcohol-related crimes due to going, due to going fully wet, is our proximity to Lexington, and the...
Right, accessibility.
Yeah, we have about, what is it, 60, 70% of our population within about five miles of the county line, so they could go over, you know, back in the day, before we went fully wet, and go to the liquor store. And, so, not out of my personal, out of my personal knowledge.
Not your first rodeo, but you're right.
Whatever. But anyway, that's, that's probably, so we, what we saw was a lot of attendant effects of being a fully wet community without necessarily, without being nearly moist. This is a weird conversation.
It is.
It needs to be...
You're handling it really well.
A better, a better way of describing alcohol regulation than this, because, I don't know.
For the last 12 years, most of us have used the term moist incorrectly, we were limited.
It's true, and they actually changed their definition.
That limited...
I think what the alcohol sales, what's made the difference is convenience. They were getting the alcohol, as Mark said, on their side, and just the convenience that you're in the community right now.
Well, we just saw the, we just saw the costs.
Right.
And, but it was one of the arguments, if you remember during the referendum, is that, hey, you, we need to capture this tax revenue so that we can spend the money to take care of the cost that we're already experiencing.
Nationwide statistics and research proves that density of alcoholic beverage outlets directly corresponds to crime rates. It's, it's almost indisputable, the way the two tie together, and you've had cities that, cities recognize they don't want to go, they don't want to go the nuclear option, which is to go dry, and the policing and regulatory aspects are how they keep the cost and the crime under control. So, nobody, nobody is suggesting, I'm not suggesting that we, we abandon our evil ways and go back to being a dry city. I'm trying to get everybody to understand, and by everybody, I mean, not just this council, but anybody else who's looking, who's potentially willing to scrutinize this city's regulatory license fee, that we have a rational and justifiable basis for the fee that we levy. It is supported by evidence, and it's supported by statistics, and I'm asking the council to adopt that as its, as its, right, as its, as its position, as its official guideline. And then, the statute contemplates that we reevaluate this on an annual basis, we look at, at what the trends have done, and determine, continue to determine that the rate that we charge and the revenue that we receive corresponds to the needs that we have.
Andrew, you're kind of trying to build a protective case, maybe, would that be the right way to say it?
Yes, absolutely. I, I have seen, what, what really opened my eyes, well, let me say, my eyes were open before I even came here, not, not with respect to this city, but back at DLG, I dealt with this issue with counties, and we, we would advise them to be very careful with that fee.
Well, we were told that.
Right. So, when we got that, that open records request back in August, asking for backup documentation on our fee, I'll be honest with you, I didn't have anything to send them.
That was a red flag, too, wasn't it?
I didn't have a single thing to send them, other than what the ordinances were and some minutes from the meetings. So, I said at that point, right then and there, okay, if we want to keep this fee...
Right.
We have got to do the legwork. And then, when we went to the League of Cities Conference, the folk, the staff from the Alcoholic Beverage Commission, and the, the staff from the League of Cities, and the staff from the State Auditor's Office, got up and did their big spiel about how they are going to start scrutinizing.
Right.
And we will be, if we do this, and we continue to do this every year, we are shielded, I can't get, nobody can guarantee you 100% shield, but we are in a better position, in my mind, because I've, I've talked to them, I've talked to a lot of them, we are in a better position than any city in the entire state.
Your document.
As a matter of fact, I, you know, I, I think that, I've had discussions about this with the folks at the League of Cities, and they're hoping that I can share these ideas with other cities as well.
And, and in our defense, when we adopted these, we knew that we were going to have to readdress them.
Yeah.
And we knew that they were somewhat of our, of an arbitrary number at that point. So, I, I think this, this is a, this is a pretty good piece of work that you put together.
I think it's outstanding.
Yeah, absolutely. If, so what you're asking us to do is adopt this?
Adopt this.
We have a resolution in your packet.
Yep.
Somewhere?
Want to read it first?
Resolution, yeah. Adopting a report.
Motion? Say.
Any further comment? Again, I think this is an outstanding piece of legislation.
Absolutely.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pove? Okay, let's move on to the next one. Resolution adoption of report on alcoholic beverage regulations, license fee, that's what we just had.
Yep, that's it.
That's it.
We'll do it again.
Okay, okay.
I'll make the motion again?
All right. Mr. Engineer, you co-in.
Aren't we supposed to read this resolution? Counsel, we've recently selected the lowest bidder for the UCOIN. This was round two. Round two, we had three contractors, and the cost came in way over budget, about $150,000. As you know, the city and county both put in 60,000 for a total of 120. 10 of that, approximately 10 of that was for the architect, which left us with 110. So, there was a difference of about $40,000. So, we asked the pre-contractors to determine and value engineer the project, and through another bid submission process with them, back and forth with the architect, and we came in at 139, 139, 321. So, we were able to cut the cost by about $11,000. And, well, for you is a contract with the MO, the Tourism Commission, and Education Foundation, Scott County Education Foundation have both decided to pick up the remainder of the tab, and we're asking for your permission to move forward.
You've already dedicated their amount, the county's dedicated their amount, now tourism will pick up the rest. We've already voted on, on our end of it, and we're just voting now to accept them adding the extra amount to take care of.
Just a matter of procedure here, and I, I guess I didn't understand, when, when we agreed to fund this project, when did we become the project manager for this project?
Somehow, I always get to be the project manager of any projects.
Well, I mean, what...
Part of it because of public, public, public funding.
It was public funding, that, that was the reason.
Yeah, but it's public funding from the county, from the city, from Scott, uh, Education, from everybody else. I just, I'm just kind of curious as to how all this funnels back to us to expend our energies on it.
Well... I think, too, part of that may come down to who owns, I don't know if we own the property...
I think we do.
And they pretty much operate it for us.
Okay.
And, and like you said, back to the public funding, and we wanted to make sure that everything was followed, that this time they did get a certificate of occupancy.
Right.
So, pretty much, we took the lead, and also, we do, I think, own the deed to the project.
I have no problem with it, I was just curious.
Yeah, there's a huge spirit of cooperation, and hopefully that can continue.
Always, always.
I'd love to make the motion.
I'll second that.
And...
Any, any further comments?
The, the only further comment was the fact that this gives the Education Foundation, or it gives the UCOIN trustees, and the, the city and the community as well, an opportunity to finish this prior to an additional event or an additional anniversary. As, as some of you, most of you know, the, the UCOIN got started in 2000, 99, but in 2000 was when, when ground was broken, for the 10th anniversary of the exchange with our Japanese sister city. So, we're going to be celebrating 25 years of that in 2015. So, I think the time, you know, we were delayed a year because of some engineering and some budgeting theory issues, but this gives us, again, an opportunity to, to complete that and bring in Tourism...
Long overdue.
And the Education Foundation, so I appreciate your, your support of it.
Any other comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pove? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, counsel.
Finance?
Well, I'm bringing before you Budget Amendment Number Four for the year, and it addresses a couple of things we've talked about tonight, as well as some others. As mentioned in the memo to you, CMRS Board helps fund dispatch. Basically, there was a wireless cellphone provider that had not been paying 911 fees, and there was a big litigation with it, and so, the state has settled that. Everybody's getting a one-time payment that we didn't budget for, for back pay for about 10 or 15 years. That has come in, so we're bringing that revenue in, and dispatch has several building repairs that need to be done. They had inadequate insulation in the roof, which caused some water pipes to freeze and burst, so they want to take some action to correct that, as well as their septic or sewer line has been backing up, and so when the weather warms and they can break ground to fix that, they want to do that. So, they've asked to put about 15,000 additional into their building maintenance from that revenue that's coming in to help fix those issues. Related to the alcohol fund, as we've talked about, we've, we've discussed our fee and how we feel that it's reasonable, and that fee is bringing in an estimated $695,000, based on the last three quarters. That's what we anticipate for 13, 14. And that is an additional $315,000 above what we originally budgeted, so we're bringing that into it. And we have included, the police department has requested about $59,000 in directly related alcohol program expenses, some different educational materials, some equipment such as radars, printers for their MDTs, a traffic trailer so that they can conduct traffic stops, DUI checks, and such. I'm sure Chief can tell you a little bit more of that, if I didn't have enough detail in the memo. And so, that leaves $255,739 of police department expenditures that we're moving out of the general fund into the alcohol fund, based on the support from the report that Andrew has prepared.
Moving into the, I'm sorry, into the general fund?
So, we're taking $255,000 of police department expenditures that are currently budgeted in the police department, the general fund, and moving them to the alcohol fund.
Okay.
So, that frees up money in the general fund. And it's, it's around 13 to 14%, as I think Andrew mentioned in his report, is about, around the total that we'll be spending. So, if we're just talking about 25, 30, 40% of crime, we're looking at only reimbursing ourselves right now, around 13 to 14% of our police department expenditures. And the next thing, bringing in the grant that you all accepted the beginning of January for $5,000 for some body armor for the police department, so just bringing that in. And finally, as we mentioned, UCOIN, bringing in the additional needed for that, and showing that revenue coming in from the Educational Foundation and Tourism as intergovernmental revenue. And finally, we'll be coming back at the next meeting to bring you some more updates on this project, but the police department, the new police department. We have, as you know, we've sent a memo out to you all that we had selected our construction manager, we're working out the final tweaks on that contract, and we'll be bringing it to you next time. And this is an estimated fee of around 346, so I thought we would go ahead and put that in the budget, if we move forward on that contract, that money will be there. Also, we had a remainder of about 87,400 left on our architect's fee to get us through the end of construction. What this enables us to do is to take this money out of general fund now, move it to the capital projects fund, so it's sitting there, and we can pay for those two costs with cash and not have to finance them. So, I wanted to go ahead and get that taken care of, because here at the next couple of meetings, we'll be coming back with items to move that project forward. And I think that sums up, everything's in there, so, just a first reading tonight.
An ordinance amending the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014, whereas the annual budget adopted by the City Council on July 2, 2013, and amended on December 9, 2013, needs to be amended. Now, therefore, beordained by the City Council of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky as follows. Ordinance 13-026 is amended as follows. General Fund, CMRS Board, dispatch revenues are increased by $25,876, police department expenditures are decreased by $255,739, dispatch expenditures are increased by $15,000, transferred to other funds are increased by $434,205. Alcohol Fund, alcohol regulatory fees are increased by $315,000, police department expenditures are increased by $315,000. Grant Fund, revenues are increased by $5,000, police department expenditures are increased by $5,000. Capital Projects Fund, intergovernmental revenues are increased by $29,321, transfers from other funds are increased by $434,205, police department expenditures are increased by $434,205, community service expenditures are increased by $29,321. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in City Clerk's Office 100, North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324. Public intervention wrapped its first time February 10, 2014.
Just ask a question.
Yeah.
Help me understand where the 255,000 goes in the alcohol fund?
Okay.
Where will that money be, what will it be used for?
Police department operating, current police department operating expenses.
So, that's an extra 255,000 that goes into the police department fund?
Well, it, it frees up, so if our, let's just say, if our budget for police in the general fund was 4.7, that is now...
4.9.
4.455, or whatever.
It decreases it, because we've added money to it on their budget, what it's done.
So, it lowers our total expenses in the general fund, which frees up that money, which, at this time, we're going to be helping to use to pay for some items for the, such as the new police department or dispatch.
No, I didn't understand, I'm sorry.
I can show, draw you a picture if you want. Now, I did, I, I did that for some, I didn't mean that badly. I didn't mean that badly. I'm serious.
It's all right, hey, listen, I like the banter.
I'm serious.
Imagine that a million dollars is going into the alcohol, or, I'm sorry, into the police department from the general fund, right? Million dollars, general fund, police department.
Goes from the general fund to the police department.
Okay, every year, let's just imagine that's what it is.
Right, right.
All right, now, you're going to be taking, well, 300, it's actually, it's actually 650 in grand total, that you're going to be putting back into the, into the police department budget with alcohol money. So, $650,000 of general fund money comes back into the general fund.
Okay.
So, that is $650,000 that the general fund didn't have.
Okay, all right, I was understanding that it was...
350,000 of that is already accounted for.
Yeah, we already counted for 380 earlier this year, when we set up the alcohol fund and moved everything out there. Now, we're accounting for the additional 315 that we didn't budget to begin with.
The 255 that's floating out there, I mean, that could be, that could be put, for example, toward a building fund on the police department?
Well, and that's, that's, this budget amendment does take care of some of that, as well, as if we have freed up 255,000, then I'm showing transfers to capital projects to cover some items.
Okay, that's what I really was asking, so the 255 goes to capital projects, is that what it's going to go towards?
Well, I mean, it frees up money in the general fund...
Right.
Which allows us to have a higher revenue excess, and then we're taking some of that revenue excess to move to the capital projects.
You get the picture, David?
I'm getting it, man.
So, if we had $500,000 excess revenues over expenses, because we moved 255 to the alcohol fund, now we're taking out of that 500 excess and moving, say, 400 to capital projects fund.
Okay.
I'm not directly linked.
So, the plan is to use it for the police department? Right, I mean, I was just thinking, that's 10 police cars, you know?
Well, I mean, it's, it, no, I mean...
We're already on the rotation there.
No, I know, I'm just, that's hypothetical, but...
You're right.
Yeah. Basically, we have general revenue, part of our general revenue pays for police operating expenses.
Okay.
Now, we're using alcohol funds to pay police operating, which means we can do other things with our general revenue.
Okay, the reason, I guess, I stumbled on it, is in the third paragraph, it talks about moving the 255,000 operating expenses from the police department...
Yes.
Will move from the general fund to the alcohol fund.
Yes. So, I'm going to take 13% of Chief Bossy's salary that was paid out of the general fund, and I'm going to pay that 13% of his salary out of the alcohol fund, which means I now have whatever 13% of his salary might be in the general fund that I can do other things with.
I see, I see what your question is.
I was certainly not trying to...
Why doesn't it say that it's coming from police to alcohol? Why does it say general fund to alcohol? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I guess that's kind of what it comes down to.
Why doesn't it say that it's coming from the police to alcohol? Why does it instead say it's moving from general fund to alcohol?
Going to the general?
In my memo, or in the...
I think that's what it says in your memo, and that might be a, that might be a typo technically.
Well, memo is not official, so if I've worded that wrong, I mean, basically, police department expenses in the general fund are going down, and police department expenses in the alcohol fund are going up by the same amount.
Does the alcohol revenue go into the general fund?
It goes into the alcohol fund.
Because this does say the general fund, so is that not...
Yeah, alcohol money automatically goes into the alcohol fund, all alcohol money goes into...
I may have, I don't have my memo in front of me, I may have worded something incorrectly there.
I'm not going to draw a picture.
I was certainly not trying to insult you there. Ask Chief Bossy, I drew a picture for him the other day. I did, I drew a picture, so it's certainly not meant as an insult, sometimes it's just easier to see it on paper.
I'm not messing with you.
No, whether I understand it or not.
My memo may have some incorrect wording.
All right, let's proceed.
Would you like a motion?
It's the first...
First reading, never mind, I'm fucking second reading already.
Took so long.
Certainly did not mean any personal insult.
I know. By the way, me.
Budget schedule? Were you ready? Per Ordinance 05004, I'm bringing to you the schedule for budget preparation. Basically, list out all of the finance and council meetings where we plan to discuss the 2014-15 budget, and pretty much, this is consistent with last year. I think we have a couple additional finance committee meetings on here above what we had last year, maybe starting a little bit earlier. And also, there is anticipation that on the March 24 council meeting, that I will be bringing inter-local budgets for your review, provided the timeline with the county goes as anticipated, so that we can discuss those prior to the act. the actual budget discussion in May and June.
When, when is the mayor, I think I'm a sheep, if it's on or not, when is the mayor going to present the budget?
The first council meeting in May, May twelfth.
May twelfth, okay.
And then, um, of course, we hope for first and second reading in June, and, of course, I have second council meeting in May. I, I wrote that as second council meeting without a date, because again, it falls on Memorial Day, so I'm assuming you all will set a special meeting for that. And again, all finance committee meetings will be held at five PM upstairs in the second floor room, and of course, obviously, all council meetings at six PM here, so...
So, this doesn't allot for any special council meetings?
Uh, it doesn't currently. Obviously, those, as it said, may be added to the schedule upon public notice.
I'm sure. We're going to stick to the schedule.
Good luck with that.
I could try.
No, I'm...
And basically, I mean, unless you all, it doesn't have to be adopted, but unless, if you all have a problem with anything on it, let me know, otherwise, we'll be publishing...
Well, we can add more meetings.
At any time.
Absolutely.
With their twenty-four hour, I think it is, uh, special meeting notice. This is the minimum. This is the minimum, and this will be published as a public notice.
I made a move.
We have a motion?
Okay, I'm sorry.
We just need a second?
Yes. Second. Any, any further comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Stace. Fire Department, finally up there, John. Order approving purchase of an administrative vehicle, which is in the budget.
Yeah, that's why we're here. Mayor, Council, we're here tonight to seek your approval for the purchase of a two thousand fourteen Ford Explorer from Paul Miller Ford. Like the mayor said, it is a budget item. It was for twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred forty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents. That is on state contract price, and it does include the, uh, purchase and installation of the emergency equipment, radio, light siren that goes inside the vehicle.
Does it have the new sirens?
Is it loud?
We heard all of them tonight. So, move?
Second.
No financing of this. There's no financing, it's pay catch, out budget, right?
Yes.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, John. Appreciate you hanging around. And you too, Ms. A. J. R.
Here, I'm here. So, I've taken a second crack at the inclement weather and shutdown, uh, policy, so I'll just, uh, let you ask questions if you have them. Hopefully, you like this version a lot better.
She did a lot of detail work on this from other cities.
Yeah, we looked at, um, the policies that Henderson, Frankfurt, Lexington, Versailles, and KLC had available to us, and, um, this is kind of a, a hybrid of a few of those. The main difference would be, obviously, as I'm sure you've read, um, we're not going to be paying employees if a city office shuts down except for day one. So, if we're already at work, three-thirty comes around, it starts to snow horribly, or ice, and the mayor says, we're closing, go home, we'll pay the remaining thirty minutes of the day, but any other time that something might be down, um, employees are going to be using their own time to be off. If they don't have any time available, then we will allow employees to volunteer in our emergency services department, police, fire, nine-one-one, as long as their department director verifies with that chief or coordinator that there's meaningful work for them to do.
You guys can help us find something for them to do, Kate.
They will put them to work. But that's just if someone were going to lose pay because they didn't have any vacation or comp time available for them.
Is that what you wanted from the last time?
Good.
Motion?
That's fine. Motion.
Second.
Second, uh, Mark. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Megan.
Bye, thanks.
Go home. Police update?
I wanted to add one thing, and I wanted to, uh, give kudos to the Georgetown detectives in the recent, um, indictments for, uh, Ms. Jones's cold case of the homicide. It was Georgetown detectives that originated that tip that led to that, uh, cold case being solved, so we couldn't announce it before because the, the media and we were stalling the case and stuff, but that originated from Georgetown detective working out in committee.
Thanks. First time I heard that. Counsel comments? Anything you need to say that you haven't already seen?
I know, it's been a while. I want Andrew to take a look at that. That, that's from a while back, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but I was going